April 21st meeting of the Cookville City Council to order. Whoever call please.
Councilman Womack.
Here.
Councilman Miller.
Here.
Mayor Shelton.
Here.
Vice Mayor Wheaton.
Here.
Councilman Walker.
Here.
I present.
Thank you. At this time, I'd like to invite those that wish to do so to stand for the invocation given tonight by Buddy Pearson, pastor at the River Church, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance to the United States Flag.
Let us pray. Dear gracious heavenly Father, we just come to you today, Lord, thankful, thankful for this community, thankful for the area in which we live. We're thankful for the, the people that make up this wonderful town. Lord, we just pray tonight that you'll be with our elected officials. Lord, just fill them with wisdom and discernment. Lord, we just pray that you'll lead and guide the decisions and the decisions they make will be the best for the community and glorify you. And Lord, we just pray that you lead, guide, and direct us. Thank you for all the blessings you continue to give us and forgive us of our sins. And Lord, we just pray these things in Jesus' name. Amen.
Consider approval of agenda as presented. Are there any changes? Motion to approve. Motion seconded. Any discussion? All vote.
All votes correct. IBS motion carries.
For a consider resolution R two two zero four one one honoring Economic Development Coordinator Melinda Kiefer upon the occasion of her retirement. Mr. Mills. You go ahead and say some nice words if you'd like. We do. And consider Melinda a dear, dear friend. Maybe, maybe you could even say what a sister from another mister or something like that as we brother. However, yeah, however, we want to do that. But so let me read this in honor of her. Whereas beginning her career as Economic Community Development Coordinator with the City of Cookville in April of 2010, Melinda Kiefer has been a catalyst for economic development and community growth during her tenure. Whereas Melinda has shown loyalty and dedication to the citizens of Cookville and Putnam County, always working as an advocate for her hometown, sharing fond memories and appreciation for the sense of community and legacy that was provided by her family, her father, former mayor Tony Stone, and I'll throw in her mom Dean Stone, who is my teacher. Whereas recognized the importance of building relationships, Melinda has participated in numerous roundtable events, boards, and programs representing the city of Cookville and Highlands area with the utmost regard from her peers. And whereas her service has also extended to civic engagement, she is champion for her alma mater Tennessee Tech by service on the Alumni Relations Board, as well as her tireless work to diddle Julia Sis in the success of the Blue Cross Bowl while showcasing the community, along with her involvement in many beloved local events such as Fall Fun Fest, the WCTE Great TV Auction, and a long-running series, Live Green Tennessee. Now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of Cookville, Tennessee, that on behalf of the employees and city council and citizens, sincere appreciation is hereby extended to Melinda Kiefer for her valuable service to the city, and best wishes are bestowed at her retirement. Now therefore be it further resolved that this most auspicious occasion be marked by honoring Melinda Kiefer upon the occasion of her retirement as Economic and Community Development Coordinator for the city of Cookville, and this resolution shall be duly recorded and filed in the city clerk's office, adopted this 21st day of April, 2022.
Thank you, Mayor. Just very quickly, I, the best way for me to sum up my time at this city is thank you for trusting me. Thank you for trusting me with my passion and that you knew and I was able to prove to you every step we took was for the benefit of this entire community to raise the per capita income of every citizen, to make sure, you know, people were able to take care of a aging parent or go to a movie or a small vacation. And it takes little bitty baby steps and, and it takes a huge team. Mayor and council, you have the best staff in the world. The minute I set foot in here, I told somebody I've never seen so many people do so much with so little. And they're to be honored and commended for that. I am so humbled and proud to be part of that team. I cannot tell you. Thank you for honoring me with an opportunity later on the agenda to continue some good work. We've got a few good things out there and thank you for letting me continue to be a part of that. I'll spend my time flying to DC to see that new grandbaby with my orchards and out of my 70 acres and I can't wait. I love you all dearly and intentionally. And I'm just so blessed to have had the opportunity to serve. Thank you.
Just very like the motion to.
Any comments? Did y'all have any comments from Melinda?
I mean, I don't, I mean, there aren't words to, to, I'm just sad that only got this time to work with you, but your legacy is going to live on forever for what you've done for the city, for, for Cookville, for the councils that you've worked with. You're irreplaceable. You really are. So we are gonna, we're gonna miss you and there's some really big shoes to fill. So we can do it, yes.
You know, people that don't know to thank you is a big thing. What I'm thinking of, there's so many jobs that were brought to Cookville because of your support. So thank you very much.
That's one.
I'd like to thank you and thank you and thank you because you brought so many jobs to echo. You have a skill to interact with people to bring out the best, and you were able to interact with these businesses and corporations and get them to think about Cookville and to work with them and work with them and work with them, baby steps, like you said, and, and really get the good factories and corporations to come here. So thank you very much.
Linda, I just want to thank you so much. You, you, when we, when we first get into this, this is only my first term also. And, you know, I wish we could have another term with you. You know, I, I hope that, I hope the best for your retirement and your future. And I just want to say, you, you care so much about your community and, and you are certainly a role model. When we talk about people in this community who cares about the community, cares about how the community grows in this, in the direction it grows in, and making sure that we keep Cookville as, as close to home as we can, but still meet the needs of, of our own community. And I just, I just know that's a hard thing to navigate sometimes. And I want to really thank you for all the hard work you've done.
Yeah, I'll say this. I remember coming to Neal Street and you were, you standing in an office and I said, you need to come to the city of Cookville about February of 2010. And, you know, literally, and, and I'm, this is not an exaggeration, every single job that has been brought to this community, government doesn't create jobs, first of all, but we, but we set an environment for people to want to invest here. And every single job that has come to this community in 2010, she's the chamber. She's the one that has her DNA all over every project that's been in this community. And that's a fact. Thank you.
Okay, so motion for to receive this resolution.
Second.
Second. All right. All vote.
All votes correct. IBS motion carries.
Before B, presentation of final aquatics facility study, Los Design, Rick Woods.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. In November, you approved an agreement with Los Design to conduct a study for an aquatics facility for our city, and you appointed a steering committee to guide and assist in developing that plan. That work is now complete, and it has been a terrific process and has had a tremendous amount of community input. I want to say thank you to all who contributed to this process and especially to the members of the steering committee, some of whom are with us here tonight. Those members of the steering committee include Greg Huff, Janet Coontz, Ryan Risher, Laurie Smith, Brad Westrick, Elsa Nooncaster, Rachel Nuttin, Jenny Malone, Chad McDonald, Kara Sheets, and Christina Buttram. And I'm very pleased tonight to have Los Design President and CEO Chris Camp with us to present this final report. Chris.
Mayor and council, I'm a little nervous because I have to follow Ms. Kiefer or Kiefer. Oh my, what a, what a career. But as we move into the presentation, I know you can see it there on your monitor, but I want to echo what Rick said. We've had a tremendous amount of public input on this project. Several of you on the council have attended some of our meetings. Others have, have sat in and been informed. And I think Rick has done an excellent job with the steering committee, his staff and all. But I'll, I'll jump right in. And the, the first image that you see, this came out of your comprehensive park and recreation master plan, which also had a lot of public input in it. And you see the, the theme, and that's why we're here, was you heard from your community that they wanted an aquatic center, they wanted a pool, you know, they want more swimming opportunities. Well, we held a public meeting, and I can't remember the name of the community center. Kane Creek Recreation Center. Max is here with me on our staff. I believe we had 140 people attend that evening. And, and we gave them the opportunity with these docs to share with us what their preferences were for both an indoor and outdoor pool. And as you see on the slide, on the indoor side, the competition pool received 205 dots or votes. Each person could have three votes. We gave them three dots for the indoor, three dots for the outdoor, or four. But, and, and so we compiled that information. Then we did an online survey to give people who didn't have a chance to come to that meeting, the opportunity to share input. And this doesn't count the input that we were getting from the steering committee. So again, we had a theme of, of projects. And so then with the steering committee, we presented these image boards that you can see before you. These are the type of things people said they want. And, and we had not yet drawn anything. We, you know, we were, we were really vetting the community on, on what they wanted. That was, that's part of our process. And so we showed character images of different types of pool features, both indoor and outdoor. And, and again, these were similar to the images that we used in the survey and the public input. And, and, and we did see a consistent theme developing of what, you know, people wanted. So then we developed a concept plan for both an indoor and an outdoor facility. And, and then we presented this concept to the steering committee. We got additional feedback from the steering committee. One of the things, and I'm going to point at it, but one of the things the steering committee told us, they wanted, they wanted more outdoor, what I call flat water for swimming laps, and they wanted an outdoor diving board. And we said, well, we've got indoor diving boards. And I said, no, when you go to the pool in the summer as a kid, you want to be able to jump off a diving board. So we added that back in. And, and the, the water slides. So in effect, you have, the outdoor pool has a zero entry feature, if you're familiar with that, where you walk into it, just like you're walking out on an ocean beach. You know how just gradually the water gets deep. There's a lazy river component, which is a current channel, which can be used for therapy, walking, you walk against the current, if you, in, you know, the months that it's open. There's water slides. That was a big thing that people told us they wanted. And, you know, other play features, as well as a large deck where people can gather. There was a desire for a pavilion and a turf lawn area where if a daycare or even if Rick, his program runs a summer camp, you could take children and go to this turf area and pavilion and, and spend time. And then obviously, you know, you have to have deck for people to lay out. And then fun umbrellas, those are those big 20-foot umbrellas. So it's a really nice outdoor water feature. Indoors, people wanted a competition pool. They, they wanted a therapy pool, a place where the water is warmer. That's what's labeled as the multi-warm, that has warm water, where you could do therapeutics, water aerobics, as we age, and I'm now in my 60s. So I understand warmer water feels better. But it also has some play features to it, and then, and then a therapy spa. And so we, you know, vetted all of these with the steering committee. And so this was the final design. There's a, a couple other tweaks. We've talked about maybe adding another pavilion and moving some of the loungers closer to the indoor facility. But, but, but the long and short, and I'll go to the next image, you know, this is, you know, what indoor pools can look like, competition pools. And we use the term competition because you can host swim meets there, but it's not just a competition pool. There's a lot of other things you can do with an indoor pool like that. Everything from lifeguard training to swim lessons to fun play. And, and now, I can't remember that show on television where the people have to run through those obstacle courses and all. They, they make those now that you can hang over this pool, the indoor pool, lower it down, and it becomes a really fun activity pool, not just a competition pool. And there's always time for lap swimming for those who are, you know, competition swimming, for those of you who don't know, goes all the way to death. They have master, a master swimming program, which is a national program for adult swimmers who want to remain competitive throughout their life. And we're not talking Olympic level, but people who are passionate about swimming. And so the pool we designed would always have lanes that would be dedicated to the people who were lap swimming. Even, even when a team was there practicing, you would have lanes dedicated for the general public to come and swim. So, and we, and we've looked at various building types and had discussions on, on that. But, you know, and then we said, well, how much property do you need? You know, so we took a couple of pieces of property around town and just did a layout so you could, you could see, you know, what your space demand needs are. And it's about 13 acres. And we, we did just a couple of different site plans to, to show how, you know, the, the facility could operate. And, and one of the benefits of building both an indoor and outdoor facility together are when you do have big meets or, or big events, either outdoors or in, you have all that parking because we have to park for, for, for both. But then we also talked at length about separating the facilities, or how could you phase it? Could you build an indoor facility first, and, and then build an outdoor facility later? And as you see in this image, it shows, you know, the footprint of the building, which could be built first with all the indoor facilities. And then we looked at how you could build the outdoor facilities and then come back later and add an, an indoor facility. And, you know, we even broke the cost down. It, it, you, you can really get down in the weeds, but the, the, the real, to maximize your investment, if you build one half or the other as a, as a piece, that's how you're going to maximize your investment. The indoor piece, let me back up. The indoor piece, we've estimated at 16 million 500,000. It's 453, but 16,500 would get you all of those indoor features. And believe it, 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 let me back up again, see both. You might think the, the capacity of the indoor, if you look at it and you try to visualize all that curvy water outdoors, it's actually a little bit less water. The bathing load for the indoor facility is approximately 550 people. The bathing load for the outdoor feature is approximately 450 people. So that's at one, in, in other words, by, by coves, you could have a crowd of 450 at one time, at, at any given time. You know, 50 people leave, 50 more can come in. But that would be, so the combined capacity is just under a thousand people for this facility at, at, at any one time. But back to the, the cost, again, just over 16 million for an indoor facility. And that would be a year-round facility. That includes the locker rooms and administrative offices, all the pump system, et cetera. And the outdoor, it's just over $10 million. And, and again, that, that, that is including some combined and, and shared uses. And then to help you as you go forward, should you need to pare it down and maybe build an indoor competition pool and then come back later and, and want to add some of the other features, and you can do this on the outdoor pool as well, we provided you with a, a cost estimate that breaks down the components as close as we can do it at this level of planning. You know, if we were, we're at master plan level, we're not at construction drawing level where we could sharpen our pencil and, and give you a little bit more. But you've got cost breakdown, and, and we've shared this before, with all the committee, city manager and others who've attended, or maybe Rick's had it. But then at, at the last meeting, Eric, you asked me, what are the pros and cons of, 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 you know, if, if we had to split it to two different sites? And I reached out to our pool consultant, and I reached out to SFA, who's a company that worked with us on the feasibility study for, for the ice center. And, and I listed them. The, the pros of a shared facility include a, a single pump system for the entire complex. So it's, takes the same amount of pumps whether you split it or not. But, but when it's at one location, it's one operator who has to maintain those. And one of the big things in pool operations is water quality. So if you're all at one site, then that manager's, you know, maximizing their effort to maintain your water quality, shared filtration, shared locker room facilities, shared concession operations. You're not at two locations. A reduction in mobilization costs for construction, because if you have two different construction sites and potentially two different contractors, then you're going to have higher mobilization because they're both going to charge for that effort. And reduced overhead and profit, again, because you have a, a single builder versus two builders or, or, or being on two sites. This is a big one. When I talked to Evan Ehl at, at SFA, he said, the real challenge now in operating any type of aquatic centers is the demand for lifeguards. And SFA manages a lot of aquatic centers across the country. And he said, this is what they're having to do now. He said, we may have to operate the indoor facility like from eight to 10 during the summer months when the outdoor facility is open, so that people can come in and lap swim. But then we have to close the indoor pool and take those lifeguards outside because we can't get enough. And so the, the, the shared staff would include your aquatic center manager, your aquatic center operator, and the operator is a person who's trained in all the pumps and the filtration. The, the aquatic center manager runs the place, and then lifeguards. So that is a advantage if you do combine them, consistent operating hours, you know, you, even if you have to stagger them during the summer, you can set hours at one center and not, not having to do two. And then the travel time, which is, all of you know, you have public works officials, you have firemen, you have all kinds of city employees. Well, every time they're in a car driving from one facility to the other, well, now, I shouldn't say it's not productive now because people are on their phones, excuse me, doing some work. But, you know, in the old days, man, those maintenance people really liked those 45-minute drives between one facility to get to the next. So that, now, the cons, if you did split them, would be increased staffing and concessions, operations, because you're now manning two different locations, increased support staff, the, the time and distance, increased maintenance, land acquisition, if you have to buy two separate properties. And, and I think a big one is, there was a, there's a lot, been a lot of discussion about how your citizens are traveling to McMinnville and Lebanon to swim. But if you have one really big center, I think it's more of a destination that would attract people to Cookville instead of people from Cookville going to other communities. And as I mentioned earlier, the ability to share parking. But that, that's really the, the end of my presentation. I'll take questions. But again, your community has spoken loudly to us, which allowed us to complete the design. And I must. And I must admit, when we had a hundred and forty for that public meeting, that's the largest public meeting I've had in a long time. And I've been doing this a long time. But I'll I'll take any questions you may have.
Do you have any questions? We'll be getting back to. Is there a motion to receive the report?
A motion.
Motion second. Motion second to receive the report. All right, all vote.
Well, I'll end by saying we appreciated the effort and we thank.
Thank you, and we appreciate the steering committee that volunteered your time to to serve and to to help make formulate this plan. We appreciate that.
All votes correct. Five yes, motion carries.
Under Old Business, five A, consider approval of municipal council meeting held on April seven, twenty twenty-two. Is there a motion? Motion second in discussion.
All votes correct. Five yes, motion carries.
On the consent agenda, six A, consider awarding bid for two one fifty KVA pad transformers for electric department and six B, consider approval of change order number six for the new police department headquarters. Is there a motion on the consent agenda? Motion second in discussion.
All votes correct. Five yes, motion carries.
New Business, seven A, consider resolution R two two zero three zero seven allocating a portion of American Rescue Act funds and the Tennessee Department of Environment and Conservation Funds for water treatment plant expansion and improvement project, the Berry Heights Pump Station Replacement Project, Tennessee Tech Pump Station Replacement Project, and construction of Tennessee Tech Equalization Basin. Ronnie, Ronnie Kelly.
Mayor and Council, I'm asking your consideration on resolution twenty-two dash oh three oh seven that would allocate some of the American Rescue funds that the city was allocated and a the portion that TDEC also allocated to the city. The resolution would allocate eight million dollars from the American Rescue Funds, leaving about three million dollars left in that fund. It also asks for four point one two million, all of the TDEC funding. We recently received one point two million allocation from the Puntum County, agreed to allocate us some money towards our water treatment plant. So the eight million that we would use for the ARP funding would be used for the Berry Heights Pump Station Replacement Project, where I think we'll have it out for bid maybe next week. It'll also be used for the Tennessee Tech Pump Station Replacement Project, along with a equalization basin basin at that location, and for the water treatment plant if needed at that location. The TDEC money, the four point one million, would be allocated all to the water plant expansion project. I'd request your passage of this resolution and be happy to ask any answer any of your questions.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
A motion.
Motion second. Any comments or questions from the council?
Just excited to see us be able to keep up with this this sort of growth that we have and have actually have these funds available. You know, I think Cookeville's really fortunate that we weren't replacing, you know, city losses during the past few years, and so we're able to take this money. And because we've actually done well as a city in the past few years and and and, you know, planned well, and we just live in a good place to live, we've been able to take those funds and and use them on this. And I think that's a really important thing because, you know, this is, this is a great way to keep water sewer rates down and a great thing to put our ARP funds into.
Any other comments? All vote.
All votes correct. Five yes, motion carries.
Seven B, consider rescinding eleven four twenty-one motion awarding bid for one tandem axle dump truck utilizing statewide contract number two oh nine, ID number zero seven two three one zero for the Water Quality Control Department. Ronnie Kelly.
Yes, Mayor, Council, this was a our budgeted dump truck we had in a budget that the council authorized in July of twenty twenty-one. It was canceled, and the council reauthorized that purchase in November of twenty twenty-one. Well, that that truck has been canceled. So we have to rescind that bid, and then I'll bring the next item will be for purchasing, hopefully, on the next round.
Okay, is there a motion to rescind the action?
A motion.
Motion second. Any comments or questions from the council?
All votes correct. Five yes, motion carries.
Consider approval to purchase one tandem axle dump truck utilizing statewide contract number two oh nine zero seven two three one zero. Ronnie Kelly.
Mayor, this is the same truck on the statewide contract. The price is one hundred sixty thousand four hundred thirty-three dollars. We'd recommend approval.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve? Motion second. Any comments or questions from the council? All vote.
All votes correct. Five yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Seven D, consider rescinding eleven four twenty-one motion to purchase one single axle dump truck, two oh nine zero seven two three one zero. Is your services, Rick Woods.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Just like Mr. Kelly just just spoke about, we also requested and entered into an agreement or or purchased a single axle. Ours is a single axle dump truck on a statewide bid contract back in August. Ours was, you approved that, and then we came back, that contract was canceled. We came back to you again in November and asked for you to approve the new price on that, which you did. And so we're here again. There's been a change again, so we're asking you to rescind that action that you took in November or, yes, in November, to rescind that item.
Is there a motion to rescind?
A motion.
Second. Any comments or questions from the council? All vote.
All votes correct. Five yes, motion carries.
Consider approval to purchase one single axle dump truck utilizing statewide contract two oh nine zero seven two three one zero. Rick Woods.
Again, thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is the request for the approval of the purchase of that single axle dump truck at this based on the statewide contract at this price.
Is there a motion to approve seven eight? Motion second. Any comments or questions from the council?
All votes correct. Five yes, motion carries.
Consider consider approval of consulting agreement with Melinda Keifer, Mr. Mills.
Mayor and council members, as you realize, Miss Keifer has retired, but we discussed about the possibility of staying on with us as a consultant on a part-time basis. So this agreement, drafted by Mr. Ray, our attorney, would allow me to retain her services for special projects if we move forward. As you know, we have several projects in the hopper that we'd love to continue to have ability to be able to advise and provide assistance with. I would express your opposition to enter into this agreement with Miss Keifer for consulting services.
Motion to approve.
A motion.
Second. Any comments or questions from the council? All vote.
All votes correct. Five yes, motion carries.
Seven G, consider resolution R two two zero four zero nine, recognizing home of Tennessee Tech University as one of the official slogans of the city of Cookeville. Mr. Ward.
Thank you, Mayor and council members. These next two items are related, so I'm going to kind of go into both here under the same item. These are relative to the Gateway Monument projects that the council and Tennessee Tech have been talking about partnering on. The Plank Department submitted two proposed locations for Gateway Monument signs to the Tennessee Department of Transportation for consideration. One at the proposed location by Tennessee Tech at the westbound off-ramp of Interstate Forty and South Willow Avenue, exit two eighty-six, and another at the westbound on-ramp of I Forty South Jefferson Avenue, exit two eighty-seven, just east of Cracker Barrel. The proposed monument that was submitted, I've got some post-up locations of these. This is the one on Willow and I Forty. This is the one on South Jefferson at the on-ramp. The proposed monument that was submitted was the more traditional design consisting of masonry construction, which would read Cookeville, home of Tennessee Tech University. So it's this one on the left of the screen. Now, T-Dot provided initial approval of the two proposed locations with feedback. To include the proposed language on the monument, T-Dot requires the city council to pass a resolution that home of Tennessee Tech University is one of Cookeville's official city slogans. The next steps for the Gateway Project are to submit final requirements, including professionally prepared engineered plans stamped by a licensed engineer in the state of Tennessee. And we also require a resolution in support of the project, which is the next item on our agenda. So I respectfully ask for council's approval of R two two oh four oh nine, recognizing home of Cookeville, home of Tennessee Tech University, as one of our official city slogans.
Is there a motion for seven G?
A motion.
Motion second. Any comments or questions from the council?
Yeah, I'd just like to say, just aside from the monument, I am very proud to say that the honor of slogan that says we are the home of Tennessee Tech University, and just on its merit alone, I would be excited to to have this resolution.
Any other comments or questions? All vote.
All votes correct. Five yes, motion carries.
Seven H, consider resolution R two two zero four one zero in support of a Gateway Monument Project. John Ward.
Yes, again, Mr. Mayor and council members, as I described previously, resolution R twenty-two oh four one zero provides council's full support of the Gateway Monument Project, and I respectfully ask for your approval.
Thank you. Is there a motion? Motion second. Any comments or questions from the council?
All votes correct. Five yes, motion carries.
Seven I, hold a public hearing, consider on first reading ordinance oh two two zero oh two two zero three zero four, amendments to the official street map. Mr. Ward.
Thank you, Mayor and council members. Amendments to the official street map are necessary due to the construction of six new streets, the addition of one street that was discovered from a plat that was recorded many years ago, and the abandonment of a portion of one street. This amendment would include approximately four thousand four hundred and forty-five linear feet of streets or zero point eight four miles proposed for addition to our official street map. The purpose of the official street map is to depict the streets for which the city of Cookeville is responsible for maintenance and to reflect the official names of these streets. The recommended amendments include Raylene Court, Village Loop, Oak Grove Drive, Brook Hill Drive, and Cabot Lane, all constructed as part of new subdivision developments. Bobby Nichols Drive was extended within an within an existing development. South Side Drive is the street that's being added to the official street map due to discovering a previously recorded plat from from many years ago. And council, we will also be removing approximately ninety-five feet of Job Drive that was the closed, that was closed and declared as surplus property for purchase by the adjoining property owners. These amendments have been reviewed and approved by the Planning Commission as recommended by the Plank Department. I recommend approval and happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. At this time, we'll open the public hearing portion. Is there anyone that would like to speak about this matter, about these roads? All right, we will close the public hearing portion. Is there a motion? Motion second. Any comments or questions from the council? All vote.
All votes correct. Five yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Seven J, hold a public hearing, consider on first reading ordinance oh two two zero three zero two, rezoning of a portion of parcel located on East Spring Street, tax map fifty-three AL Group C parcel oh one seven point oh one, from RM fourteen multifamily residential to CL local commercial. Mr. Ward.
Thank you, Mayor and council members. Here's the general location of the the rezoning request. Here is a site map of the property along Spring Street. Here's an aerial view of the site. You can see the existing zoning. Mr. Gary McNapp submitted the request to rezone from RM fourteen to CL, a portion of the property located on East Spring Street. The property is currently split zoned, RM fourteen multifamily residential and CL local commercial. The entire rezoning area consists of approximately four point three acres, which is the area in the back that's currently zoned, RM fourteen. The the subject property is bordered by CL to the east, south, and west, and RM fourteen to the east, north, and west. The property is bordered by to the east by an area owned by the Morningside Assisted Living Facility, which includes a reserve strip on the west side of the private access street, Living Hope Road. The application was submitted to create consistent setbacks on the property to allow for future residential development. The rezoning request is to have the entirety of the property rezoned, CL local commercial. The RM fourteen district is intended to provide a high-density multifamily residential environment in areas where public sewer is available. A minimum site area of two acres is required for any development within the RM fourteen district. The CL district is intended for small and moderate sized offices, personal and business services, and general retail businesses serving the general population. Various types of residential uses are also permitted in the CL district. The setback requirements for the RM fourteen district and CL district vary. Rezoning the entire property to CL will establish consistent setbacks along the east and west sides and the north of the property. Future land use concept plan, element of the Cookeville twenty thirty plan depicts this area as best suited for local commercial development and higher density residential development. A CL district is compliant with the future land use plan. The rezoning would extend the CL district across the entirety of the property and establish consistent setbacks for the property. We've got some view, aerial views. This is, you can see this is across the street from Big O's near Saxony. It would be rezoning that rear portion to establish a consistent setback for development. This rezoning change was approved by the Planning Commission as recommended by the Plank Department, and I recommend approval. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. At this time, we'll open the public hearing portion of the meeting. Do we have anyone that would like to speak about this matter? We will close the public hearing. Is there a motion? Motion second. Any comments or questions or discussion from the council?
All votes correct. Five yes, motion carries.
Okay, hold a public hearing, consider on first reading ordinance oh two two zero three zero three, rezoning of fifty-four eleven Love Lady Road, tax map ninety-six, parcel sixty-nine, from RS twenty single family residential to RS five single family residential. Mr. Ward.
Thank you, Mayor and council members. Here's the general location of the property on the southern end of the city limits. Here is a site map of the parcel. Here's an aerial view. There's your existing zoning. Titan Development, on behalf of property owner James Wright, submitted a request to rezone this property from RS twenty single family residential to RS five single family residential. The subject property identified as parcel sixty-nine on tax map ninety-six contains approximately one hundred and nine acres. The property is bordered by the corporate limits to the south and west, and RS twenty single family residential to the west, north, and east. The rezoning application was submitted to allow for higher density residential development. The RS twenty district is intended to provide a low-density, single-family residential environment where in areas where public wastewater services are not available. A minimum land area of twenty thousand square feet per dwelling unit is required. The RS five district is intended to provide a moderate-density, single-family residential environment in areas where public sewer is available, with a minimum land area of five thousand square feet per per building lot. The future land use concept element of the Cookeville twenty thirty plan depicts this area as best suited for lower-density residential development. The RS five district, consisting of primarily single-family detached development, has been interpreted as compliant with the land use classification. The current city limits consist of approximately twenty-two thousand nine hundred and sixty-four acres. The single-family residential districts, specifically the RS twenty, RS fifteen, RS ten, and RS five districts, consist of thirteen thousand six hundred and seventy-two acres. Of the current acreage, the RS five district represents three hundred and forty-three acres, or two point five one percent of the single-family zoning districts. We have some maps depicting these. These are our RS five areas. And our largest one currently in the city is part of the reserve that's located on the northeast section of the city. And you can see the various other areas that are currently zoned RS five. Rezoning this property would increase the percentage of RS five area to approximately four hundred and fifty acres, or three point two nine percent of the single-family residential districts currently in the city limits. The subject property has approximately five hundred and sixty-four feet of street frontage on Love Lady Road and an additional fifty-foot access point on South Love Lady Road. Those are your street frontage locations of this property. South Love Lady Road is classified as a minor collector street, and South Love Lady Road is classified as a local street. Traffic counts from February Traffic counts from February 2022 on Love Lady Road just east of the property provide an annual average daily traffic count of 537 vehicles per day. Crash data was compiled for the last five years by the Cookeville Police Department for Love Lady Road adjacent to the subject property, including January and February of 2022. Since 2017, a total of six crashes have taken place in the vicinity of the subject property on Love Lady Road. Three of the six crashes were single-vehicle accidents. One crash resulted in an injury, which was also a single-vehicle accident. The existing streets were evaluated by the Public Works Department, and Public Works provided the opinion that the current street conditions were acceptable to support single-family residential development. Also, Public Works stated the accident data did not appear to be of any concern. The property provides access to Bunker Hill Road to the west and north. South Jefferson Avenue can be accessed to the east that connects with Highway 111. These multiple ways of egress provide options for households in a potential development that would be utilizing our existing street network. Low-pressure sanitary sewer service is in the vicinity of the property, has extended in a sewer project to serve the old Sparta Road area. However, this sewer does not have capacity to serve this property. The developers are currently working with the Water Quality Control Department to extend sewer approximately 5,500 feet from the Hudgens Creek Pump Station on Bunker Hill Road to provide sewer service for the development. This area was annexed as part of the Southwest Annexation approved by the City Council on May 1, 1997. The Plan of Services for this annexation area was approved by Resolution R-910410 on April 17, 1997. The Plan of Services specified that sewer service would be provided to the annexed area based on the same criteria used to determine the expansion of sewer service and the other unserved portions of the city. A sewer extension to serve the subject property would also provide sewer to numerous other parcels on Bunker Hill Road and Love Lady Road through portions of the Rebecca Place, Bunker Hill Road, and Bunker Hill Road, Love Lady Road annexation areas. The Plans of Services for both of these annexation areas specified that sewer service would be provided within 20 years of annexation. Both annexations were effective in 2007, so sewer must be provided by 2027. And obviously, no development would be approved until adequate sewer service is provided to this property. There's one thing I want to point out. The Planning Department was contacted by the Tennessee Historic Commission. There have been comments about the historic Love Lady Road cemetery. It's depicted, it's kind of faint, it's yellow on that map. The proposed sewer project would not be extending down Love Lady. It would turn onto South Love Lady and have no impacts on that cemetery. This property is also significantly encumbered by the Pigeon Roost Creek floodplain along the eastern portion. The Planning Department estimates that approximately 23 acres of the property is included in floodplain. Sorry, I moved past this. This is the annexation areas. I wanted to depict those. These show the Rebecca Place, Bunker Hill Road area, and the Love Lady Road areas that were annexed in 2007. And this is our annexation area from 1997 that you see on the southern portion. So to the environmental factors, the property is also significantly encumbered by the Pigeon Roost Creek floodplain along the eastern portion. The Planning Department estimates approximately 23 acres of the property is included in floodplain. The property also includes three areas of sinkhole retention areas and two U.S. Fish and Wildlife identified wetlands. Approximately 25.6 acres of the subject property is encumbered with limited natural factors. And these are depicted on the map. So we've got several aerial views of this. This is looking to the south. This is Love Lady Road. This is the subject property. You can see, these are the residential areas that border this, the existing residential properties that border this property subject for rezoning. This is looking at the existing homes along South Love Lady. Looking back toward 111. Looking back to the north along the floodplain. And so, also, looking back to the south. The Planning Department has seen several versions of subdivisions for this proposed property, depicting over 300 lots potentially that could, would be developed on this property if rezoning is approved by the council. Some of those designs have proposed lots reserved for amenities for the development managed by homeowners association. It also protects the natural factors in community lots, such as the floodplain areas, sinkhole retention areas, and any of the environmentally sensitive areas. The Planning Department recognizes the RS5 district as providing an option in housing that is a significantly small portion of the overall area relegated to single-family residential development. The RS5 district provides a single-family detached housing product with less property to maintain, and is typically at a more affordable price point. At Monday's work session, what you see before you, this is a rezoning to rezone the property in its entirety to RS5. Council had directed the Planning Department to explore options to provide transition zones between the existing residential and this property. I had provided a couple of those to you guys. Here is an option that would provide a transition along the western boundary of the site that's adjacent to the existing single-family residential. That this would maintain those areas as RS20 residential. So any developments that would occur, you know, along those property boundaries would be consistent with what is allowed in the current zone. So it would be allowed at an RS20 designation. A second option, potentially to provide a transition, if sewer service is extended to this property, would be to maintain a transition, which was depicted as a larger area as RS10. So that would allow an increase in density to take advantage of a sewer extension, which would allow an increase. This would include, you know, essentially both sides of the access streets that access into development and provide a transition at a higher density. So this rezoning request was recommended by the Planning Commission as recommended by the Planning Department. I recommend an approval, and I'm happy to answer any questions the council has regarding this request.
Thank you. We'll open the public hearing portion of the meeting. We have a lot of people that want to speak on this. I just want to establish the points of order of how we're going to do this. Please step to the microphone over here and state your name and whether you live inside the city limits of Cookeville or outside the city limits of Cookeville. A statement of no more than three minutes may be made pertaining to this item. Once the timer sounds, you will need to wrap up your comments within five seconds. There will be no yielding of time to another person, and no one can speak twice. We're going to be respectful of each other. There will be no yelling, jeering, or clapping, engaging in verbal attacks or comments intended to insult or slander any individual, not be tolerated. And any of the above shall be called for termination of time privileges and expulsion from the council chambers. So we want to hear what you have to say. We want to hear, but we want to be respectful of each other. So please speak clearly into the microphone so everyone can hear. Welcome to come up.
Good day, council. I'm Tim Dias, and I live at 5301 Love Lady Road. Kind of a little nervous today. Today's a big day for me. Your guys' decision is going to be a big day for me. Presented several things that I was going to read off, and it's quite long, but I kind of go over just a bit of it. We purchased this place because of the quality of life there. We drove around the area, went forward, we bought there, we've been there about 14 months, and it was a standard, the standard of Cookeville, not the standard of Murphysville, Mount Juliet, West Knoxville. The standard was Cookeville. That's what we have there. If you're wanting to change it, that's what this proposal will do, is change it. We will follow suit as another city, another copycat of another city. I don't think Cookeville really wants to be that. We wouldn't all be here if that was the case. I'm not against the development of the farmland. I'd love to see state farmland, but I'm not against it. I knew the fact when I bought there that it could be just built as an RS20 subdivision. Not against that. I'm not here against, you know, that kind of development. When I'm kind of, you know, I've got just a ton of mixed motions about this and different things going on. I went through your guys' 2030 planning in great lengths. I spent hours and hours in that. And the best thing I can tell is it's a 1990 plan that has been rolled over and rolled over, and a little bit of advisement here and a little bit of advisement there. And in 2010, the city funding did a survey. And in 2010, the population of the city was 30,000 people. 30,000 people resided there. That was the census results. You had 154 people answer that survey. That's it. And that's the survey that you guys are guided by through the comprehension plan to guide you guys on how to make decisions. Only 154 people. We have probably almost close to double that in our petition that we turned in to that. The 2020 census puts us just under 35,000 people. In 10 years, we've had approximately growth of 5,000 people. If you divide it over 10 years, it's averaging 500 people per year. You know, that's not taking out your death toll or other people moving and coming. Everybody stands here and tells me, we need this, we need this. Well, if it was needed so badly, some developer would have already built it as an RS20, not as an RS5. Part of the comprehension plan that I read about, it also states in it that it's the way you guys guide developers. You are to place the sewer system in. You're supposed to have all city service in and ready and not be jumping ahead. I think we're kind of jumping ahead here. We're asking a developer to develop the sewer system for us, not the city the other way around. I think your longevity...
Let's wrap up.
Okay. I'd like to thank you guys for your time. You guys got a hard decision.
Thank you, sir.
Mayor, council members, thank you for taking the time to listen to us. I believe the rezoning...
Excuse me, sir. Would you please just state your name and if you're inside the city or not?
I'm sorry, a little nervous. My name is Bill Symborski, and I'm just outside the limits on Long Lane Road.
Okay, thank you.
I'm worried about the traffic all the way over there.
All right.
About three miles.
Thank you. Your timer will start now.
I believe the rezoning of 5411 Love Lady Road is a bad idea. There are a few reasons why I oppose rezoning. Safety. Have you seen the type of roads in the neighborhoods, like the ones around this area? Narrow, winding, many curves, hidden driveways and road access points make this area a challenge to drive on just with one car passing another car. Sometimes, you know, you've got to stay awake. You never know when a dog, wild animal, horseback rider, or loose cattle will appear. High-density housing will only make this worse. Quality of life. This is a beautiful area that residents move to because of the low density and large land parcels. High-density housing will ruin the quality of life in this area. Increase in traffic, this not only affects nearby neighbors, but everyone in Cookeville. Even folks passing through on the interstates. We've all been stuck in traffic at rush hour, school zones in most areas downtown Cookeville at different times of the day. Turning left across traffic is close to impossible at these times. If allowed to change to high-density, this development will add 300 to 900 vehicles to local streets. Big cities live with gridlock driving conditions most hours of the day. Every time we add high-density developments to our area, we take one more step towards being like those big cities. Look at how long it takes to cross under I-40 at Jefferson now. Most of the new residents at this proposed development will use Jefferson to access town. The rest will come through my neighborhood. Strength on utilities, even though the developer will supposedly pay for sewer expansion for the project, who will pay to expand the treatment plant when it is over capacity? The taxpayers at Cookeville will have to pick up that cost. Other utility expansions will be paid for by taxpayers, too. The lack of school space. I understand that Prescott Elementary is close to capacity already. Just this development could need its own school. As we are gathering signatures from our neighbors, not a single one of them likes this idea. I know you, as a town council, want the best for all of us here. I suggest you put this to a vote of the people, or at least send out surveys to get a gauge of how the constituents feel. I think you'll be surprised how many will oppose this. The only ones in favor are the ones that stand to make money from developments like this or have friends that do. In closing, one of our neighbors put it best by saying, if I wanted a bunch of houses all around me, I would have bought a house in town. Thank you for your time. We appreciate it.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir. Hi, I'm Spence Madell. I currently live in the resident in the reserve, and I'm building a house in River's Edge, not far from this. I have, in general, I am not a person who's too concerned with the ecology issues like that, but I live in the reserve. We're underwater, constantly underwater. We live in a RS5 development that has been so poorly developed that our dogs can't go out in the backyard because it's underwater. There's been attempts to fix it. It's underwater. Any kind of development like that is a ton of concrete, and that's what concerns me about changing zoning from an RS20 to an RS5. We live with it every single day, and you guys don't realize it, but we live with it every single day. Every time it rains, my dogs can't go outside. I don't own there. I rent. I'm lucky. The people who own on my street are in trouble. They can't even sell the houses now at the end of my street because it's underwater. They've diverted water. It's underwater. The other issue I have is the developer that we're talking about here does not enhance community or does not invest in our community. The wood, the supplies they get comes from out of town, not from our local suppliers. The people who work for them are brought in from outside. They hire very few of our local community workers. And I have to tell you, if we're going to grow, let's let our people help it grow. I'm going to let my wife talk the rest of it. She is very involved in the PTO at Prescott, and our kids go to Prescott. And I have to tell you, I'm very concerned. They are almost out of capacity there. You add 300 new families, they're all going to have children, or many of them will have children, and they're not going to be able to handle it. So this is Tammy, my wife.
Thank you, sir.
Hi, my name is Tammy Madell. As he says, we live in the reserve, and it is awful. We stay underwater when it rains. But I like to speak with the school. Even before the construction started, traffic with Prescott, it's awful. You know, we have police officers and everything out front, and with the construction now, it's really bad. So can you imagine adding all those homes that I'm aware of? Prescott is at 98% capacity. We want to start a art program, but we're having to borrow classrooms to do it because there is no space to have it. There's no space to have an art program at Prescott because it's full. There's no classroom at all to expand just to have an art program. So where do you add extra classrooms? If you had to rezone, you are, you're going to upset a lot of people's lives. They have a lot of kids at Prescott. There's a lot of kids that are like two, three years old. They anticipate their kids to go to Prescott, and now you're probably going to tell them they can't go to Prescott because you're having to build 300 homes. So that's, it's the school that I'm really concerned with, and the traffic coming from Love Lady, and we will be into River's Edge. That's where we will live. So can you imagine? I mean, everybody's got at least two cars, so at 300 houses, and I mean, Love Lady through Jefferson and Prescott School Zone with the middle school and the elementary. So at 300 houses, and I mean, Love Lady through Jefferson and Prescott School Zone with the middle school and the elementary. I just don't understand how that can be possible. So I hope for the school's sake and the kids, because like I said, there is no classroom space now in the elementary. So I hope you guys really think of that and the kids at Prescott.
Thank you, Ms. Madell.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Brad Bender. I live about a mile north of this on Southern Woods. So we're in the city and my wife and I moved there about 10 years ago. And I think I've spoken with everybody in the city council and God knows most of the people in this room. So I apologize in advance for that. Just like Dr. Madell said and his wife, and just like Mr. Dyer said, one of the things that people find consistently is we moved here knowing the rules. We moved here knowing what the zoning looked like and what we could expect from that zone. And we expect the city council to respect that. And one of the issues that we look at is when the city seems to be going outside of the rules to make exceptions for a developer to bring in an out-of-state home builder. So when we look at this, what I see is I see a piece of land that's going to end up with over 300 houses on it. 300 houses that are going to be built by a corporation from Dallas. As Dr. Madell said, they're not going to hire any contractors here. There's no economic benefit for this city or this county. All these jobs are going to people out of state, all supply being bought out of county. No sales tax for this county and the city. But what we are going to get is we're going to get the bill to pay for the schools, sewer, the utilities, the roads. And we're even paying for part of the sewer to help everybody out of this. And this is in an area that we're not even obligated to provide the sewer to. So you just have to ask the question, is this a precedent that we as a city want to set going forward? That we bend to out-of-state corporations to make the rules an exception while we suffer the consequences? And that's something that I think the city council should think very long and hard about. Thank you for your time.
Hello, my name is Tricia Bramwell. I live in Rebecca Place and I'm about four houses off Bunker Hill. I hear a lot of traffic, so of course it's a concern. Many reasons why I object to this rezoning. Mostly, it does not fit the overall character of this area. Of course, everyone moves out that way because it's beautiful and it's spacious, but we're seeing it changed and that's not why we moved there. But another concern I have is over the last few years, I have watched outside investors, outside developers, they're having their way with Cookeville right now. For some reason, it is a hotspot to develop. And I know it's, Tennessee doesn't have the environmental restrictions that a lot of states do right now. So they're looking at Texas and Tennessee is a very hotspot right now for builders. Right now, everyone thinks there's a housing shortage. There are 16 million vacant houses in America right now. 364,000 of these vacant houses are in Tennessee. Most of them are being bought and held by investors. They're not homeowners. They do plan eventually when the interest rates get just a bit higher and our residents cannot afford to buy them. They're not going to sell them, but they're going to rent them to us. And they will not be affordable. They're going to rent them at the highest price that they could for this medium income. So it's not benefiting Cookeville, but it is benefiting the outside investors. They have a lot of hedge fund money and they also have a lot of the PPP loans that this White House has been printing up and handing out to these investors. We're paying the price and it's just, it's not fair. Another thing, I just read this two days ago. The US Census Bureau, they said right now, there are too many homes being built in this country. You won't see it. Maybe in about three, six months, you'll start to see. We don't need this many houses. They're all investor-owned and they are here in Cookeville. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, council members, my name is Robin Thompson. I live at 659 Blue Water Drive, which is just outside the proposed subdivision in Putnam County. I oppose the proposed rezoning of Love Lady for three reasons, in addition to the many that have been sought tonight. If you look at the surrounding subdivisions, River's Edge, Hickory Flats, River Bend, the Lanninget Fallingwater River, these have all been built with homes on a half acre or more. And so to build a subdivision with five to eight homes per acre, completely out of character for reasons already stated. Secondly, using the figure 306 homes according to that one plat, if these 306 homes are built, anytime you begin to add a few family members, you're going to have 1,000-plus people living in this area. Yet this area, in terms of its connection to the city, has no sidewalks, no bike paths, nothing which these 1,000-plus people can connect with the city in a recreational way. And I believe that until such sidewalks and bike trails are built to the southern parts, this is far out of character for what we want. And frankly, it's not safe for anyone using it recreationally. Third, at the planning meeting where this was approved, according to the minutes, the developer said that he would be adding, quote, "many amenities" to the subdivision. Yet there are no amenities detailed in the plot. So question, how many amenities is, quote, "many," unquote? One, three, five, 10? Who knows? What kind of amenities? Playgrounds, parks, green space, swimming pool, walking trails, all of the above, none of the above? Who knows? That's why, in my experience, before you approve this subdivision, I would, as RS5, I would ask that you require the developer to submit a more detailed plat of the amenities he plans to put in there. What kind, how many, and where? And then let the rest of the people see what is going to happen in that community. How many lots does it take away? Now, why do I ask that? Because most developers are interested in only the bottom line. Whereas Cookeville is interested in quality of life. In my experience with working developers in my past life, developers only do the bare minimum in order to maximize the bottom line. I believe that Cookeville does not want the bare minimum. I believe that Cookeville wants a high quality of life, which is the very reason my family and I moved here. So for those reasons and others, I respectfully ask that you oppose the proposed rezoning. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
My name is Brandy Irish. I live at 5301 Love Lady Road. And the transitional that he is proposing, that's not an offer, that's an insult. Why do we need R5 in there at all? If you need houses, do the RS20. I'm going to have 30 new neighbors next to my livestock and everything else. I've had my horses stabbed. I've had their hair cut. And it's a long road that didn't have R5s. I've had them fed stuff that they weren't supposed to have. So yeah, this is a big thing. I moved away from California and all you're going to do is turn this into California. Don't do that, please. I moved here 20 years ago to go to tech and I moved here because it was beautiful. It was country enough, but I had city also. And now you're turning this into California. Don't do it. Please don't do it. And the RS5s, they're like cockroaches. You can't get rid of them. And once you even allow them even just a tiny bit into something like this, he is going to utilize it and just kill everything that's there.
Thank you.
Hello. Thank you for hearing us, council. My name is Jason Matthews.
Speak up just a little bit, please.
My name is Jason Matthews. I live at 1541 Lake Villa Circle, just on the other side. And my family farm is actually right next to where this development is going to be. It's actually occurred to me during this process that a lot of the same arguments that are being made in support of this development were actually made in a neighboring county in Cumberland County about 25 to 30 years ago when they put in the glades. They built a similar, a similar sort of housing development up there. And it was multi-zoned as well. And it, things did go good for about 25 or 30 years. Now, the average property up there has lost 45% of its value. The original builders are no longer involved in it. The Cumberland County and the City of Cross was had to pick up the EMS services and all of that. Council, you plan a growth for 25 or 30 years out. Please bear that in mind when you approve these developments. Things do change. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
My name is Randy Richards. I live at 230 South Love Lady Road. Been there for nine years. Woke up every morning of those nine years, looked out my bathroom window, raised a shade and look out there. Beautiful sunrise, peace, million-dollar view out there. The proposal to go to RS5 is going to put a house potentially 15 feet from my back property line, which Mr. Mayor is as close as from me to you. I can't mow my yard without blowing grass on their handles. That's how, that's how close that's going to be. But my focus is, not now, but in the future, five, 10, 15, 20 years down the road, there's going to be retention ponds in this, in this development, from my understanding. Two, three, four, five, maybe not even, we don't even know yet. Who's going to maintain those retention ponds down the road? What, what, what responsibility is a city going to have in the future on, are they going to maintain them? Are they going to be the responsible? Is the HOA going to be trying to be responsible? How, how's that going to work? You know, they're, they primarily come out as industrial and commercial type pieces of development. But they just recently come out in residential in the last 10 years for residential properties. They're dangerous. I want to bring your attention to a couple of things here. One thing, the retention pond over the shopping center is, is good, but there's one issue with it. Behind Chick, Chick, what's the Chick-fil-A, or not Chick-fil-A, but Buffalo Bob Wild Wings. There's no retainer wall down through there. There's no guardrail down through there. There's probably 10 or 15 feet of water down there that somebody could just drive their car off in. There are reports in the country of people driving their cars into retention ponds and drowning. But my big focus is, is kids around these retention ponds. Now, these are supposedly affordable homes. Affordable homes, you're going to have kids. You're going to have small kids. Jacksonville, Florida, last year in June, after the drowning of deaths of two children with autism this year, Jacksonville city council members are meeting with state regulators to figure out how to move forward with the new safety requirements for retention ponds across the Ball County. Now, I'm sure there are specs to build these things, but I'm talking two years from now, three years from now, five years from now, 20 years from now, is a city council will be sitting in here that is possibly some of our kids or grandkids trying to figure out how we can keep these, these young kids out of retention ponds from drowning. And so just, just look at it. Just look at it. Retention ponds are dangerous for small children, five and under. They get in them and they can't get out. So thank you for.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Ritchie.
Mayor and city council, Ron Johnson. We live at 5210 Love Lady Road. A brother now on the 100-acre farm. Something good sometimes comes out of something bad. And I think that's one of the things that's happened here in Love Lady Neighborhood. Thanks to Tim and Brandy, we've been getting together and talking and sharing each other's thoughts and concerns about this development. I think at first I was kind of selfish and thought it's only going to affect me and my family, my farm and my brother. Come to find out, everybody in Love Lady Neighborhood is really concerned. I think you can see that tonight. We have become united. We have become organized. And we're opposed to the rezoning of Love Lady, 5411 Love Lady. We've been up and down the roads, Canvas Love Lady, Bunker Hill, West Cemetery, the South Love Lady, knocking on doors, asking people what they thought. All we had to do was pick up a map, show them this map that y'all presented to us at the planning commission, tell them that was going to be built at 5411 on their way over to Jefferson. All they did was ask me where they needed to sign. We ended up, like Tim said, with about 253 hundred signatures, but that was only one person per household. That would be about 500, 600 residents in that area, which would be a majority. There's a lot of issues to rezoning 5411. It's a farm. It's been referred to as a vacant lot, but it's actually a farm. Our father, grandfather bought our farm in 1914. We're third-generation farmers. If my children farm, they'll be fourth generation. The Ratt Farm is the best farm in Love Lady by far. Our farm cannot compare land value as far as the quality of the fields. There's a lot of roll-crop land on the Ratt Farm. We used to, all and we, looking at the Love Lady Farm, 5411, I've fished and hunted on the farm. It's a beautiful farm. It's always been since 1997, a decision by the city to come in and annex it and about four more farms. They traveled right down Sparta Highway. They, and I know Charles Rollback may have been on the city, then they annexed part of the Sparta Highway all the way down to down to Love Lady Road, turn right and took, turn right on Love Lady and come over and annexed about four or five farms because of the wishes of one farmer. Now the rest of the people. There are several issues. Nobody's got a crystal ball and what might or might not happen in 10, 15, 20 years, 50 years, it's already been discussed. All we can do is speculate what it might look like, surrounding areas. We think that the council, if they pass the rezoning this evening, then they, you will want us to look like Murfreesboro, Smyrna or Mount Juliet. All of us tonight can be sure there are going to be several issues that appear sooner or later. I'm only going to name two or three of these. Is my time out?
Yes, sir. Just give me 20, 30 seconds, if you will, please.
The first thing that we're worried about is erosion of the soil, red mud and water running in all directions. The Corps of Engineers will be very interested if any of this pollutes the three surrounding waterways, including Hudgens, Pigeon Roost and Fallingwater that runs into Burgess Falls Park. There's going to be enormous amounts of storm water running somewhere, either Pigeon Roost Creek or to the west of Hudgens Creek, where there's other landowners that, that aren't directly involved with housing. There's going to be pollution from the construction and development of 300-plus homes. And in summary, I'll go ahead and jump to my end.
Yep. Literally just one or two sentences, if you will, please. And I'm trying to be respectful and I need you to be as well.
Appreciate it. We are told the zoning will solve our city's population problem, but fails to address the added pressure of public goods and infrastructure, disregards the impact the current residents' quality of life. It's been a blessing for my wife and I to move back to the farm from Livingston where we were for about 44 years. We are blessed to get to be with my brother and farm together. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Hello. My name is Mitzi Medley and I live at 695 South Love Lady Road, which is in your urban growth boundary. And my farm does join this development at one point. The only thing I want to say is when the planning commission map and all these plaques were shown, I didn't see any sign of it following SRA 231, City Cookeville, which follows their ordinances under SRA 231. Anytime you develop property that's got significant sinkholes, you either have to have a state of Tennessee, excuse me, license, GL. excuse me, licensed GL engineer or geologist that is familiar with CARST. Do it. Check the property. As far as I know, this has not been done and it is part of your city government. Another thing I want to say is, the developer supposedly, and I don't mean the local man, the other, the bigger one they're talking about has a very, very bad track record, especially environmentally. In two thousand and nineteen and in two thousand and twenty, the company allotted four hundred million dollars for each of those years to address problems of building and environmental issues. In fact, they have been cited environmentally by the federal government before. Other than that, I mean, as long as they follow SRA two thirty-one, I don't really have those problem every, a lot of other people have with it. What else was not mentioned on my farm, which is is the main floodplain of Hudgens Creek as it enters Falling Water River. Pigeon Roos Creek, of course, is necessary for the treated wastewater to go down. And it, it has more than ample room. But I do want to point out that Pigeon Roos Creek and Hudgens Creek actually drain sixty-four percent of Cookville. And if they're not very careful, they're not going to get more rainfall, but it'll be too fast. Because when it rains, four inches within four days, the road is covered over there on South Love Lady. And it takes about four days for it, takes the same amount of time for it to drain down.
Thank you. It, it, the point, the place where you pointed is that, is that, is that the White County part?
Down here is the White County.
I didn't see where you pointed.
This is the White County part. This is part of my farm and parts on the other side.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Yes, sir.
Good evening. I'm Tony Baker. I live at two eighty-five South Love Lady Road and it's directly under the word rezoning there. And I strongly oppose this rezoning proposal. The proposed rezoning to RS five is wildly inconsistent with the City of Cookville's primary goal of enhancing the quality of life for its citizens. Rezoning this property to RS five means developing it to feature hundreds of homes crammed into tiny lots as small as five thousand square feet, and it serves only to profit the developer at an extreme cost to the neighborhood's current character and the resident's quality of life. Property in question is currently RS twenty, which allows for development of homes on lots as small as twenty thousand square feet. The current RS twenty status is consistent, as has been shown, with many existing homes in the area. RS twenty allows for elbow room and privacy between and among houses, which helps create an expansive, peaceful neighborhood, which is precisely what attracted my family and many of my fellow homeowners to the area. And I've lived there for thirteen years. Keeping the property at its current RS twenty zone designation allows a developer to build homes, new homes, that abide consistently with the current spacious character of the neighborhood. Voting against rezoning still allows development of the property. The lots would merely be sized in keeping with existing lots and homes in the area. However, if the property is rezoned RS five, the city is promoting development of dozens and dozens of acres to create severely congested, new community that's dramatically out of place and overwhelming out of step with the current Love Lady Neighborhood. Rezoning will change the face of the current neighborhood for the worse. So I urge city council members respectfully to vote against rezoning the Love Lady Road property. Thanks for your time.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Baker. Yes.
My name is Connie Ferris. I'm the Love Lady Cemetery caretaker, and I'm here to oppose this development. Currently, I do not live in the area, but in October of two thousand twenty-one, I sold my property at fifty-two thirteen, which is two driveways from the, the Love Lady Cemetery. I'm a descendant of the Love Ladies. The church was at the end of my driveway. There are the oldest grave in Plutnam County's in White Plains. The second oldest grave that's documented is in Love Lady, eighteen fourteen. The Love Ladies bought this property in different sections, starting in eighteen oh seven, when it was White County. There are four Civil War veterans there, CSAs. And the road, the road split it to nineteen thirty, from my research. There are over one hundred unmarked graves in that cemetery because the road went over them. And if, from living where I was, which is right here, this is the cemetery where it was split. The account that you did on the traffic study in February is not relative to what it was last May because that's when the construction trucks come through and all of the appliance delivery trucks. That road, that hill is very dangerous to pull out of. I never backed out of my driveway, always turned around and pulled out. My concern is that we will lose more graves because even though you plan to take the sewer in a different direction, if the water lines or the road has to be widened to accommodate the traffic and for the water, then that narrow road is going to take graves out. And the ones that are in the small section, I'm allergic to every single one of them. There are Love Ladies buried there, there are more Ferris's buried there. And I have a cousin here, Mike Ferris, he lives on Booker Hill. And it's going to affect every road back in there. People are going to take a shortcut down Love Lady and go to South Bunker Hill to get to Prescott School. And it's going to be insane because like I said, I could not back out of my driveway. I had to turn around. And that was, it's just a dangerous situation. And if that, again, if you widen the road, you're taking out graves. You're taking out our grandfather's brother's grave. He died and was, he was born, he was born and died October the thirteenth of nineteen oh three. And his grave is right by the road. And I just hope people consider the historical value of that cemetery, not destroy it any further. So we do not lose any more graves. Thank you.
What else? Yes, sir.
Attorney General Counsel, I'm David King. I live at two, two zero South Love Lady Road. I had a little deal road up here, but after hearing all my neighbors and everything, I want to change it a little bit. My wife had lung disease, so that's one of the reasons that we bought there because of the low traffic and everything else. Now you're inviting more traffic. The other thing that I, was at our last meeting that we attended here, I forget who it was that said that this was going to be affordable housing. Somewhere in the range of three hundred thousand to five hundred thousand, I believe, was stated. My question is, when are you going to raise the, the wages of the firefighters and the police department? Because they can't afford that house at the interest rates today. Where are you going to get enough jobs to support three hundred homes? Where's the jobs for those that make that kind of money? The average for a home at that is going to cost probably seventeen hundred to two thousand dollars a month in mortgage fees. Most everybody's got bills and everything else, credit cards, car payments. They won't qualify that unless they're making close to sixty, seventy thousand dollars. Where are those jobs at? Not three hundred for three hundred houses. You're looking at two incomes. Where is the six hundred jobs coming from in such a quick time? That you're going to have this subdivision built. I don't have any problems with an R twenty subdivision. Cookville can absorb those people, that number with new jobs and everything. But if you're planning R five, I'm sorry, whoever is on the planning board needs to really look at the proposals that we've laid out. The roads, the intersections, the schools, the sewage, the water problems. There's more than just five hundred or three hundred houses. There's a community that's going to be basically ruined by going to R five. R twenty, I won't speak for everybody else, but I don't have a problem with R twenty. So, I moved in thinking I was going to have R twenties in behind me someday, but now all of a sudden, boom, it's R five. Thank you for your time. I just don't want Cookville to become like every other town around Nashville and Knoxville. Oh, and by the way, Nashville has a problem with the river. They can't drink, get drinking water because there's too much sewage going into it.
Thank you, sir.
My name's Gary Young. I live at two hundred South Love Lady Road. Just to confirm what I think you guys have heard tonight, we, as a group here, are not against developing that area. We just don't want R five. That is going to kill us.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Hello, I'm Matt Honeycutt. I live about two miles from the proposed development at sixty-eighty Bunker Hill Road. I grew up on South Love Lady Road. I've lived in that area my whole life. I just want to add my voice to everybody else who's here that's opposing this. Like several have said, I don't have a problem with a subdivision there. I do have a problem with houses crammed on five thousand square feet. I've, I've heard the big justification for this is affordable housing. I would ask the people sitting up here, do you know what the average income for households in this area is? You should know because that's your job as our representatives. The average is forty thousand dollars as of twenty twenty. A three hundred seventy-five thousand dollar to four hundred thousand dollar home is not affordable housing for this area. Who are you building houses for? So if affordable housing is the goal, this isn't the right solution. The simple truth is this, the proposed zoning change here doesn't make sense. The people that live in the area don't want it. Your job is to represent us, not to dictate what, what the future's going to look like. I have to wonder, you know, what else is going on here that's causing the people in the planning committee, as well as the people sitting up here to want to railroad this through so quickly? Why are we pushing to do this so quickly without taking the time to study it properly? Whatever you decide, for better or worse, is going to change the shape of South Cookville forever, for the future, right? So why not slow down, take the time to look at it, do proper environmental studies? Look at proper, proper traffic studies? Look at the impact that this is going to have on the entire area of South Cookville and make a decision after taking the time to do that. You know, why rush through this? Whatever you decide here today, everybody here is going to remember it. We'll make sure our friends remember it too. And when election time comes, we'll remember, you know, did you stand with the people that live in the area that want to keep South Cookville the way it is now? Or did you decide to go and support this big developer that wants to come in and just change the way everything looks down there? You know, I hope you make the right decision. Thank you.
Thanks.
My name is Sue Beecham. I live two sixty Love Lady Road. And these houses are going to be right behind us. We don't mind our twenty. I mean, we, when we bought sixteen years ago, we bought because it was so peaceful there. And we loved the houses. I mean, we knew that someday that might happen, but they, we figured it would be on nice lots like ours. Like we, we have half-acre lots there. And to put, you'd have three houses directly behind us. And that's too many. We, we came to Cookville because Cookville was a nice city. And you could go into town and hardly, I mean, you didn't have to have all that traffic. It's nice Cookville's growing and we appreciate everything you've done. But don't do this to us.
Hi, my name is Donna King. I live on Love Lady. Zoning laws were created for the simple purpose of protecting health, safety and general welfare of the citizens. I recently requested, council members, I respectfully request you reconsider this proposal. I have fiber, I have pulmonary fibrosis. We bought on Love Lady for that purpose. Low traffic, clean air. If you go with this enlarged housing area, the stop sign is two houses from me. In order for that housing area on that little road there, the one that comes out of the big development, they're going to be lined up to the stop sign, three houses from me for five, ten minutes. And all that exhaust from their cars is going to just flood our house. My next-door neighbor, she has pulmonary, I mean, she has COPD. She got two people there that are going to have hundreds of cars just idling because those roads out there are terrible. This is what our house, this is my backyard. That's a barn with horses. This is in front of the road. This is our road, that little skinny road that all these hundreds of cars are going to be backed up on. This was taken on my front porch. Cattle are right here. In the immediate area, we have four farms, large farms. And you're going to bring all these cars and traffic just, and the roads are horrible. I mean, really horrible. They just started building up on a hill and all that water comes flooding down to that little stream, which closes the one road when it floods. One neighbor, I go by her yard and I say, look at how the water is standing on her yard. Now, when you put all those roofs or driveways, all that water is going to pour down to my neighbor's property that's already underwater. You've got to reconsider and do better studies. It isn't fair. And when we bought, like I said, I have lung disease. I'm dying. I don't want to suffer with all those cars sitting in front of the house.
Thank you.
Mayor, Council, my name is Justin Conby. I don't know, I, I do look at the city limits. I don't know if I can address all the points made here tonight in the three minutes. So I'm happy to answer any questions about anything that's brought up here that you all may have or anyone may have. I'll say that the big push for this project is Cookville needs housing and that's it. And we want to do, approach this project in an environmentally responsible way by preserving and protecting the twenty-five acres around that, the property. So we would appreciate your consideration and again, I'm happy to answer any questions.
My name is Barbara Brown and I live at fifty-four ninety, I'm sorry, forty-five ninety Bunker Hill Road, which is at the corner of Love Lady and Bunker Hill. And I've lived there since nineteen sixty-eight. And Hudgens Creek comes on my mom's property across the road. And whenever it rains really hard, it comes up in her field. The other day, my, my sister lives in the trailer lot across the road from me. It was almost a hurt, it lighted from here to the window in her trailer. And it gets worse. It's never been that close. So if all that rain and all that, all of that goes to, to the So if all that rain and all of that goes to the, well, I'm just lost. But, you know, if it goes like it's supposed to, it will, where there's no grass, no dirt to get that rain, it'll flood Mama's land on that side and my sister's trailer, you know? So I do not want an RS5. The farm that Mom has belongs to my great grandfather. And Daddy farmed that land and everything. So it's just, you know, we don't want it. I mean, RS20, we know, and that's what we expect. I pulled out, I went to go out on Jefferson, from my Bunker Hill Road, Jefferson to hit 111. And the other day, the pullout of Love Lady Road, I said, there's seven minutes to pull out. And that's not with any other traffic coming out of that subdivision that is being talked about. So it will be more than seven minutes to get out on Jefferson, you know, when all that traffic comes. When Prescott was built, traffic started coming down our road, the Bunker Hill Road, that go out to Prescott. And right between my house and Mama's house, there is a hill. And there's a big gully over on the right hand side if you're going up the hill. Well, if you come down a hill and you meet another car, you have to literally almost stop because you have no way to get over. You have to go to the center line anyway to miss that. And then when there's another car coming, you just have to stop almost. You have to ease down there because if you go over to the, if you're going down a hill and you have to go over to the right, you're going in that big gully. And you're going red. And so I just, at Prescott, my daughter teaches at Prescott in the middle school. And she said, Mom, she said, we can't handle any more kids. She said, we're full, you know? And I heard maybe 31 kids that could be sitting there. But she said, we're full. She said, we can't handle anymore. So that's my part. So I respectfully ask that you all keep it RS20.
Thank you, Ms. Brown.
Hi, Mayor Council. My name is Georgina Hoglow, and I live on Bunker Hill. And a simple Google search will show you that there's 442 homes available for sale in Cookeville already. So housing, I don't believe, is needed. And what I want to just share with you guys is when we bought our house last year, we bought it for retirement. My husband is a blue collar worker who worked for the post office for almost 40 years. This is a retirement community for some of us, and some of us are starting families. I have two adult children, one's graduating from tech, one's graduating from full state. They are looking forward to starting their families here. They were talking about buying that half acre property, that house that is affordable. I would agree with everything that's been said here tonight from the people that are opposed to this. It's not for, this is what we came from. We came from California, Southern California. We live in a neighborhood with 152 houses stacked right on top of each other, zero property line. There's no community in that. There's no community. Everybody's working three jobs, two jobs. You don't get to know your neighbors. I love the fact that I live on half an acre. I have five houses to my right, and I know my neighbors. And we have a sense of community looking out for each other. We really love that about this area. We found this area 11 years ago. So when my husband retired, we, that's exactly what we wanted, the country beauty and nature of this state and the city. Cookeville is beautiful the way it is. I immediately got a job at tech. I love it there. But the reality is, the middle income of this city, we've got firemen, we've got policemen, we've got tech workers, we've got the hospital workers. They can't afford $500,000 homes. They just can't. There is housing available. So I saw that.
Thank you, ma'am.
My name's Marion Cadwell. I live at 3568 Rebecca Place, Tober Drive.
Could you speak up just a bit, please? Thank you.
When I first heard about the possibility of the rezoning of 5411 Love Lady Road, I was very concerned. My husband and I have been homeowners here for over 20 years. Our neighborhood is only four minutes away, and we wanted to know how this is going to impact us. We chose to live here because we enjoy our privacy and beautiful wildlife that we can experience with each passing season. We have grandchildren here, and we love the small town feel and the beautiful landscape that this town provides. This is our retirement place. And we intend to spend our days here watching our grandchildren grow up and get married. This meeting is to vote on whether or not 5411 Love Lady Road should be changed from an RS20 to an RS5. The property is presently zoned for RS20, which states, "RS20 district is intended to provide a low-density, single-family residential environment in areas where public wastewater services are or are not available." The RS5 district is intended to provide a moderate-density, single-family residential environment in areas where public wastewater services are available. The plat for this building project shows 300 to 357 homes with five to eight houses per acre being built on this property. This would increase the traffic to anywhere from 600 to 700 cars more a day with most households having at least two cars. This would create a traffic nightmare. The present road structure is not designed to handle this kind of traffic. The City of Cookeville has a statement that the primary goal is to protect and enhance the quality of life of the citizens of Cookeville while creating an environment that stimulates economic growth and development. This change in rezoning of this property is not consistent with this statement. Therefore, I'm against the rezoning of 5411 Love Lady Road, and I'm asking the City Council to take into consideration what long-term effects this is going to have on the future of this town and surrounding areas. Please keep this property at 5411 Love Lady Road as an RS20. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Cadwell.
Hello, my name is Brett Billen. I live at 5501 Sullivan Road. I feel like we are kind of on the opposite side of the property, the forgotten side. We're picking this creek's run down right here. This is our property. When it rains there, we'll get five acres of floodwater. I mean, literally on this spot right here, it'd be five acres. That whole area over there just about flooded. And I don't really see anything that's going to really be done to prevent that. And since we've been there since 2009, we've already lost probably 10 acres just with erosion from the creek. And I understand that the benefits that the city would have as far as property taxes from the 300 houses would be a lot more than they're getting from the property as it sits now. But I ask that you don't do that at the expense of us.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening. My name is Chris Hoglow. I live at 4040 Bunker Hill Road. And I had to get up here because I wouldn't have heard the end of it if my wife came and spoke and I didn't. But I think what you can see is everybody here is talking about important stuff in their life. Quality of life. When you go from, Mr. Ward, I think, said 537 cars a day. Now, we're going to up that by six, seven, 800 cars a day by the time you sell out a development like that? I know some people say it's only two cars per household, but that would be at minimum, really. I got four in my household. We can back onto Bunker Hill Road right now, but I don't think if we double the road capacity out there, that we're going to be able to do that anymore. Not safely. We have people here talking about their health, quality of life that goes along with just, you know, with our half acre lots and that's our RS20, excuse me. That's what we saw when we went out there. That's why we bought in that area. We drove all over out there. It was very, I won't say that, you know, it's exactly quiet because we're on Bunker Hill Road. But if you get down where some of these other folks are at, I'm pretty sure it's pretty peaceful. Yeah, I don't want to see six, 700 more cars on that road. And I think you also have to take into account, I know that you do your studies based upon each development that's coming in front of you at the time. But as I'm driving up Bunker Hill Road, I can see they're jamming stuff in here. I see other land for sale. I see vacant property. I know what's coming, and I think you guys do, too. So when you are looking down the road, I think it's important to consider what's going to be between that development, if you go to RS5, and then the 40 freeway as the rest of us are trying to just get into town. And I, in case you can't tell, I oppose it, and I hope you will, too. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Cadwell. Anyone else? Yes, sir.
My name is Kirk Cadwell. I live at 3568 Tober Drive in Rebecca Place. We came here 18, 20 years ago. We were looking at Franklin back then. We were looking at Mount Juliet. We were looking at different areas. We even looked up in Crossville. And we just, we found Rebecca Place, and we've been here since then. We got annexed. Taxes have been going up. We've got city lights. We got trash pickup and trees. We don't have septic. We have, well, we're all on septic, which is fine. I saw Cookeville grow and grow, which has been great. We don't have to drive to Knoxville to eat at a restaurant or Nashville. They're all here. So we spend our money here. We don't go to Knoxville or Nashville anymore. We're happy with the quality of life that has always been around Rebecca Place, which is RS20. I was very concerned when I heard it was, thinking about RS5. I mean, we already see the traffic going up Jefferson at 8:00 in the morning. It's just lined. I know you're going to expand, but that's going to take time. The issue I see with those houses, if we're going to have that many houses, I don't see them going up Jefferson. I see them coming down Bunker Hill as a shortcut and running over to South Prescott for continuing down. I just think it's not a good idea, and I am concerned, and it should stay RS20. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Sam Glasgow. I live on Timber Lane, which is a long way from Love Lady Road. I've been following this issue in the paper. And I just want to say that I'm proud to be a Cookevillian because these people who live in Cookeville have spoken their hearts. And I respect them so much. Thank you. That's all I want to say.
Thank you, sir. What else? So I'll wait just another minute, and let me explain what happens next. So when I close the public hearing, there will be no more public comments. This will be the last time. Whatever happens, if it passes this time, there'll be a second reading, and there would be no public hearing then. If it doesn't pass now, it dies. So I'm going to give you just another minute just to decide. What I'm going to do, though, is when I close the public hearing and I want to declare a recess for 15 minutes, some of us may need to go to the restroom. And so just to give everybody time to get a drink of water, whatever they need to do, we've been here a long time. You all have too. So again, being respectful of everyone. So does anyone else want to address the council about this before we recess for 15 minutes and then come back in here to then consider the item?
I just asked a question. You said if it doesn't pass, it dies. But does that mean they can never, ever ask for another rezoning again? Or does that just mean that they can attend to a rezoning later?
One year.
Okay, thank you.
For that type of reason, I think.
Correct.
But if they came back with a difference, and there's several other styles, whether it be multi-family, PRD, you know, it certainly could come back.
Anyone want to address the council or say any other? Yes, ma'am.
My name is Pamela Ferris, and I live at 5326 Bunker Hill Road. And I just want to say that I oppose this rezoning because of the traffic and for all the other reasons that's been mentioned. And thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else have any? I just want to make sure everybody's had their chance. Okay. I'm going to close the public hearing, and we're going to have, we'll come back in 15 minutes. So at 7, I'm sorry, 7:50, we'll meet back in here and we'll gabble back in, okay? Voice in your thoughts and concerns and comments. So now that we've closed the public hearing, I'm going to, for item K, which is, as we've talked about, the reading of the ordinance, rezoning of 5411 Low Lady Road from RS 20 to RS 5. That's what came to this council from the planning commission. So the motion will be, or the consideration will be, is there a motion as presented from the planning commission?
Second.
So we have a motion and a second as presented from the planning commission. And now we will have discussion and questions from the council among each other, Mr. Ward and/or the developer, if needed.
Yes, I'll start. I just wanted to touch my perspective on why I'm actually for the roots on this property. I'm a small family. I've got a two-year-old son. A wife. We both have fast jobs here in town. And I've got three friends of the same boat as I, as my family. And lots of them currently are living in apartments around town. They're spending $1,500, $1,700 a month on apartments. There are very few houses that we can afford currently. I, I had a realtor friend send me a list of $300,000 to $400,000 houses currently on the market and put them on the seat. And this is in the city limits and there were four. So all my friends are fighting over four houses in that range that we can currently afford. And I want to live here. I want my son to be able to go across town and see his grandma and grandpa. I don't want to have to move away because I can't afford to live here. And I don't want my friends to have to move away because they can't afford to live here. And that's why I'm in large proponent of this development. The one thing that I really, really am concerned about is all of our issues. And I hope the developer really takes that into consideration. That we aren't flooding more pieces of property, that we are following all the standards. We really, really take into consideration our rainwater runoff whenever we are building these pieces of land. That's all I have to say.
Anybody else have questions or comments or?
I mean, just what, with the, with, I mean, I know we as a council can't say much when it comes, all we can do is say what it's zoned for. So in terms of rainwater wash-off flooding and things like that, does a developer, I know that, we, we can't stipulate that they do anything, but is there anything in building codes, that kind of stuff, that addresses those issues?
Stormwater regulations are included in the municipal code. I mean, those were adopted by past councils. You know, I mean, it's really not my expertise to speak to it. We have a public works department with a crew of professional engineers that review all these developments that we have all over town. Everything is designed to meet our stormwater requirements, which are, from my understanding, quite stringent. Especially if you apply what we do statewide to other communities. You know, we, we, we require redevelopment to detain and retain water back to grassland like it's never been developed before, where we're trying to play catch-up on some issues. But, you know, we have, we have stormwater standards in place and those are, you know, a part of the review of any development. You know, obviously this, before the council tonight is a rezoning, you know, the, the next steps will be review of, of development, if that's how this proceeds.
I'll say a couple of things. You know, I've been a council member for now 16 years, almost 16 years, been mayor for almost eight. And this is, I received more comments and letters and I read every one of them, emails from, from citizens about this. A few things important, I think, to know, you know, when, when the city annexed this, it didn't have the current zones that it was called something else. Or what, it was RS 1, 2, 3, and 4, or something like that?
We had R1, which was 10,000 square foot lots. R2 was duplexes.
Okay. So when they knew, when it was reestablished, everything outside of the current limits that wasn't developed or in the urban growth boundary was labeled RS 20, correct? Because it didn't have sewer. And so as you look at this, I know since I've been a part of city government, and obviously if you don't have zoning, anything can happen next to your property. You could have a junkyard or you could have a salvage. You could have a garage. You could have, which was, this was looked at at one time, this, this OJ Wright Farm for a soccer complex about probably 15 years ago, before our soccer complex was built. It was also looked at twice for a fairgrounds, once for a joint White County, Putnam County possible fairgrounds. And then even more recently, when Putnam County bought property to build a fairgrounds, that was, this was, area was looked at again. I would certainly submit that a house, housing there is better than something else there. However, saying that, I truly believe that RS 5, I think that's too many houses on this lot. I, I think, I think, I think we have a one issue in our, in our code that I want us to address sooner than later. Because I think this is the first of many things that will come like this because there's land available for, out in areas, these larger tracts. I think 10, maybe 10 or 20 acres and above should be a PRD. A PRD is a planned residential development. A PRD is something that, where the developer and the city codes department and planning commission, they all work together to establish the guidelines on what that looks like, on what, what that development will look like. It guarantees, not hopes, that there would be provisions to protect natural resources and amenities on the property. And while, and no disrespect to any developer, especially this one, I, I know them as well. And, and so when I say this, without a PRD or some type of guarantee, we don't know what it ends up looking like because it's all proposals and it never has to come back to something. And that's why I think it's so key for a very, very large development like this. It should have some of that. And we haven't done very many of those in Cookeville. How many have we done? John, James?
I think one has been approved formally, right? But we do have several PRD zones. The one PRD that was approved was on Ninth and Franklin, and that was for a student housing development. I mean, obviously Mr. Mills was the planning director for many years prior to me.
So those are some of my thoughts. I, I personally, I want us to have more discussion, but I do, I do want to, I will make an amendment before we're finished here on something, but I don't want to tell anyone else having a discussion or comment before I make some type of a potential amendment. But I don't want to tell anyone else having a discussion or comment before I make some type of a potential amendment on this. I, I think the, the realization, and I, I respect all of you who've come here. And I, I respect that you love and are passionate about your property and you should be. And I, I also understand that. And so I think we have to be very cognizant of that and then try to do not only what's best for the future and growth of our city, but also what protections we can have for those around it. So that's happy to defer and others comment before I do anything else.
I'll, I'll kind of discuss this a little bit, and this is, this is not an easy one. You know, I served on planning commissions. I've seen this more so than the rest of the council. And I, and I voted to get it this far, get it to the city, you know. And I, and I want to try to speak to that a little bit too. You know, when you're on the planning commission, and Cookeville's really fortunate. We, we've got, most of our planning commission has years and years and years experience. I've been on there since the beginning of my council term as the council representative. I've got a lot of experience in zoning prior to being on the planning commission. And, you know, we're just, we are really lucky. They, they are out there looking for the best interest of the people of Cookeville. I don't know anybody on the planning commission, on the city council, that wants Cookeville to look like Murphysboro, or Mount Juliet, or Gallatin, or, you know, that, that is something I hear often, and, and I agree, I don't, I don't want Cookeville to look like that. I grew up on a farm not too unsimilar to, not in this side, but not too unsimilar of an area. And my best childhood days were, were running around that farm, going to the neighbors' properties. And it was in the county. It was, it wasn't in the city limits, but it, it really is not that much further in proximity than it is on the south side of Cooke. And I think one of the things that I take in, and I'm sorry if I'm going to be long-winded, just bear with me. One of the things that I've kind of taken into consideration on this is we are facing as a city, multiple issues. You know, we're, we're here, we're looking at a, a piece of land. And the, and the reality here is, that I know of, there's two tracks playing like this in Cookeville. And they've both been considered, and they're both on the south side of Cookeville. There's another one on the other side of 111, a little bit further to the north. And they've all been considered as either fairgrounds, or, you know, we, we've decided to build the jail here in town. But, you know, and I don't have any direct knowledge of that, but I think somebody told me that it's been considered for that as well. You know, and so when you look at this property, the idea that it's not going to be developed, it is, it's hard to, for me to grasp. Because for twenty years, and, and we talk, it's probably about twenty-five years now, is nineteen ninety-seven, correct? This was annexed. I was at high school when this property was annexed. I was not thinking about annexation of Cookeville, how that's going to affect things. But what I do see now in Cookeville, I've had a lot of, you know, I've come a long way since then. And you drive down Perrin Road and you see a driveway every thirty feet, or not thirty feet, but seventy-five feet to a hundred feet, you know, gun barrel lot, so that they can get the RS 20 zoning that's required of a septic tank. So these lots will just shoot right out into farm pasture, out in the county. And they'll get the bare minimum of, of road frontage that they can absolutely squeeze into that lot and meet the county requirements. And it's road after road, driveway after driveway on county roads. Road, places that I think should be preserved for farmland, preserved for our history, preserved for the things that we love. On this property, I mean, this is in the city limits, been there for twenty years. I didn't, we didn't make that decision. That's been long made. If it was de-annexed, I wouldn't vote to annex it. You know, I, I, I treasure farmland. I really truly do. And, you know, Cookeville is changing, and we've got to try to keep up with that growth. And that's one of the hardest challenges on the city council. This council has worked hard to do that. We passed transportation tax four years ago. We've worked hard to, to try to develop a plan so that the city can keep up with the growth that's coming. We don't, we don't necessarily control growth. You know, people are going to sell their prop, people have a right to sell their properties and let it be developed. And, you know, this still looks like over a hundred homes, I believe, if it's RS 20. You know, and, and so it's, it's still, and that would be with all septic tanks. You know, we'd be putting a sewer out there, and, and my understanding is, is ten years or so, eight years, maybe. If, if it didn't do anything, you know, we've still got to get sewer services out to you at great cost. And then it will cost more than, and the same challenges arise. But the one thing that I will take away from this is, and there's been talk about amending this and putting in buffers. And no matter how many times I look at this, is, you know, from the perspective of a lot size this big, it does change things a little bit. We've had some really successful RS 5 developments in Cookeville. You know, they're situated on five to ten acres. They provide housing. And even though it might be, and I did some quick math there, I mean, you're looking at forty thousand dollar incomes. Most houses now need multiple incomes to survive. And unfortunately, a lot of people don't have two incomes to, to, to support a household. You know, we, we've seen, we see a lot of that. And, you know, when you're looking at two incomes of forty thousand dollars, that puts you right in that three hundred to four hundred range. And these houses, I can't control what these houses are going to sell for. They very well must sell for four hundred and fifty or five hundred thousand dollars if the market demand is that. And there's nothing that we can do to control that. And we don't intend to try to control that. It does alleviate demand over the city, though, because there are people that I know who can afford half a million dollar homes that are living in two hundred thousand dollars homes, because there is no availability. And I think that will change too over time. You know, if we see a recession, or we see, you know, other challenges happen, we may see that fluctuate a little bit. The one thing about this, this, that I've, I've kind of come to understand since it went to planning. You know, when you're a planner, you really look at the zoning requirements. This is residential to residential. You look at the maps, you, you, you've got a lot of knowledge, and you're trying to put all that to work on this. You know, as a city council person, you really take into consideration what everybody's opinion is and, and how the city feels about it, and what you can do from the city's perspective to try to mitigate these concerns. And I think that that's one place where, you know, the ball can kind of move a little bit. And one of the things that we talked about Monday night, I think the mayor brought this up, is, is if you do RS 20 as a buffer zone, the back of the house lots on the west side don't really, you know, they're going to be affected, they're going to have the same zoning that they would if this whole thing was done as RS 20. As a city, you know, the concerns that I personally looked at were, how's this going to affect traffic on Jefferson? You know, we're looking at a four-lane expansion. Jefferson's about to come, you know, from 111 all the way into town. It's about to be widened in a very, very large way. Highway 111 has an exit ramp there. You know, if this, if this was, if there were a hundred and fifty houses put on county roads further out, that's more people driving further into town from all over the county to still try to buy land that is RS 20 in this area. Now, with all that said, I would have liked to have seen this as PRD as well. And with PRD, we can look at this and we can say, over a hundred acres hike, we, we can manage green space, we can look at how buffer lines are done. We can have a lot more flexibility. Correct me if I'm wrong, but, but this is my understanding. You know, you have two very experienced planners in the room. And, but you have a lot more control. We did this with the Food City project, and, you know, we kept trucks from, from unloading behind the grocery store to try to mitigate that with the neighbors. You know, we've seen all kinds, and that was with this developer. I will say something about Mr. Comby. They, they've always stayed true to their word. They've made promises to the city and kept them. They've done, done the infrastructure promises they made. They, and they, and they, they've, they've done the project, saw the project through. You know, there's a, I believe there's a project of RS 20 homes not too far from here that's been going on for years and years and years. And when that RS 20 is slowly developed over time, that's, that's years and years and years and years of traffic of lumber trucks, you know, these quicker developments. They seem impactful, but they don't last as long in the long run. And, you know, I think that that is, has some merit to it. But I think there's been a lot of good arguments as well. And, and, you know, it is an outside developer, and it is this. But honestly, there, I don't know that there is a local developer who can support putting in density into our city and alleviating our housing problems at, at this scale right now and that quickly. You know, there may be one or two, and they are working on projects. They're submitting them. I think we've submitted hundreds of townhomes in the last six months into the city limits to try to alleviate supply and demand. And the, the, the overall look at this, and, and I would, I would support taking this back to PRD so that we get a chance to really look at this and decide how this land is used. You know, not seeing it go forward as strictly RS 5. There is an option here to put the RS 20 buffer on it. But, but personally, I think if we took another look at it from the planning level, had that discussion more, we could certainly address some of these concerns and try to address the concerns as a city and, and offer, still offer the density and the green space that, that we're looking for. Now, and I will say something else, if this was a flat piece of land, there wouldn't be another twenty acres of green space on this. And the, and the capacity would be even higher. And so this meets a lot of those requirements as is. So I, I don't necessarily think, and, and the next city council, if I don't get elected again, you know, that, that I've heard that over and over tonight. The next city council can look at a development here, and, and it could be something totally different. And so, you know, I think that this is a challenge that's going to continue and go on personally for revisiting this as a planned residential development that, that will kind of address density concerns of the city, but also mitigate neighborhood concerns and try to talk these things. I've wrote, I've wrote down a lot of neighborhood concerns, including, I didn't understand that, the, the things about the cemetery. We, we, that's the first I've heard of, of the, the road system burying that cemetery. And, and, you know, I think, I'm, I'm curious about more information about that. But, you know, there's plenty of things that we can look at with a PRD. I am for that. I'm, I'm not, you know, I would, I would prefer this have a buffer than anything. So I would vote to amend this. But overall, you know, I think it, it, it would serve a good purpose taking it to planning as PRD. And Mr. Comby and, and everyone that worked on this, they, they are looking for a great product. And, and, and that I can believe in, I can, I can, you know, we've seen this product over and over again, multiple times in the city. It is quality housing. These, these are amenities that would be provided with this. I know we didn't, it's, it's, it is a HOA and a pool. But in RS 5, we can't mandate those things. And I think that's why, it's another reason to look at PRD, because you can mandate certain things that make sure that the longevity of the neighborhood will be sustained and, and for any development. And this does kind of set the tone for the rest, the remaining of the developments that are being brought to the city right now. So I'm, I'm definitely taking all your concerns into deep consideration. You know, this is something we think about a lot. It weighs heavily. And, you know, and I, and I appreciate everyone sharing with us tonight.
That's Councilman.
I've seen this property for many years. As the mayor said, back in 2003, we looked at it as a potential site for the soccer complex that's now at the high school. So I walked it. I've seen the water levels. There's a lot of drainage. There's a lot of floodplain. There's a lot of water. Water is a problem. The sinkholes are a problem. And I think all those things make it necessary that if we do anything to this, that we have a PRD to manage the development of the property, to protect it if anything is done, rather than just changing it to a strictly RS, RS 5, 5,000, you know. PRD, doesn't, doesn't that have to go to the planning commission? And does it come back to the city council after the developer develops? Can you talk about that a little bit?
Yes, that's correct. I mean, a planned residential development is a, is a zone within the city. It's, you know, just as it's described, it's planned. You know, you have to be very specific about what is being built on the property and all that. Those are knowns. It is considered by the planning commission. They make recommendations to the council. The council would have to approve a PRD, and then it goes back to the planning commission for final approvals, where it's, you know, can be fine-tuned even further. That's the, that's the process for planned residential development.
Was that looked at at all by the planning commission? Was that discussed at the planning commission?
No, the application we received was to rezone to RS 5. Well, that's what was, that's what was taken under consideration, and it, it was recommended as such.
And, and just to be clear, I think we, we can't force something to go to, to PRD. I mean, it, it would have to be reapplied that way if it was designed, denied today, we could recommend it.
We don't have a, we don't have a PRD plan, really. I know there's just specific requirements for planned residential development. And it also allows higher densities. I mean, it almost double what the RS 5 would allow. You know, it's a minimum, you know, it's around 2,000, 2,200 square feet per dwelling unit. It allows multifamily. It allows townhomes. I mean, there's a lot of options with a PRD.
But that's all, that, that is, just like this has an allowance for X number of houses per square foot. That's the same. There, there's allowances for those things, but that's all part of the, the plan of a PRD though, right? It's all discussed and it's hashed out, and it's negotiated back and forth.
Yeah, I mean, it's somewhat different, right, in that, you know, in an RS 5 development, you have to design lots that meet a minimum lot size of 5,000 square feet, right? So none of the road right-ofways, any of those areas are not considered in density calculations. You know, you, each individual lot, it's a single-family product. A single-family detached development is the primary use that's allowed in the district. In PRDs, you know, you can get a raw density based on the overall acreage of the site. And so it would permit higher densities, but these things would be reviewed. But it, you know, it's, it's a different, you know, it's kind of two different animals, right? And we, we haven't seen it applied to single family. Most PRDs that have been considered have been more, you know, the one on Ninth and Franklin, obviously, was a student housing complex. You know, that was a super dense, five-story type of development. I'm not saying that you can't apply it to this, right? He could pull, he could, a PRD plan could be presented that's, you know, for the development of this property.
So I think the biggest difference was the biggest sale for neighborhoods is a PRD requires you to have a site plan that shows exactly how it's going to be developed. It takes the guessing out of it. This is, you're actually approving a plan for how it's going to develop. That's approved by the planning commission and the council. So there's a plan that's recorded, and that's what the developer has to follow. That's really the, the big selling point, because it takes a lot of the guessing out. And it can be used, it can be all single-family. That's negotiated between the developer and the city. And it's basically a contract between, an agreement between the city and the developer. We're going to let you develop this way, but you're going to have to develop this way.
Because without that, there is no, no matter how good the developer is or honest, there's no guarantee, because we can't do contract zoning, right? We can't say, we'll, we'll do this, we'll do RS 5 or whatever. If you do these, these items, a buffering, or a fencing, or a pool, or whatever, we can't do that because that's contract zoning, and that's illegal.
We're not about PRD.
That's what I'm saying. The PRD allows that, but no one.
Show all your amenities on the PRD plan. Where's the pool? Where's the, what's, all that has to be shown? And that's what it has to be developed.
Right.
So I guess my concern is, even with the PRD, this still will not remain RS 20. And I feel like that has been the concern of everyone, is that they want it to stay RS 20. And a PRD is not going to guarantee that. And at the end of the day, we know that we need housing. So I don't know where a PRD, while we could stipulate and, and make requirements, at the end of the day, it's still going to be a developed property that's not going to have, it's not going to be all RS 20. I mean, we've all, I think we've all up here said that RS 20, we need more than that. I mean, we've all, I think we've all up here said that RS twenty, we need more than that. RS twenty is not going to, in any, at RS twenty, you're going to have over a hundred, hundred fifty homes in this. I mean, this is just a big lot that's going to be a big neighborhood no matter what. So PRD still doesn't solve the problem of keeping RS twenty. So my thing is where can we compromise? Um, and that's why I like, you know, the idea of the buffer, of the transitional zoning, of keeping it RS twenty around the property line um, to maintain that zoning for those property owners. But at the end of the day, it's going to get developed. There's just no way it's not going to get developed. Whether it's this council, another council, I feel like it's going to get developed. Um, and so that's where that PRD, while I agree it does allow a lot of stipulations, it's not going to all remain RS twenty. And I feel like that was a big concern of everyone.
Councilman Millicent. How long does a PRD development usually add to the development? Because isn't that process pretty lengthy and where are the funds now?
It's, it's similar to rezoning. So, you know, it's a, you know, four to five month process with an additional review of a final plan is essentially what it takes. So it can add, you know, a couple of months to the process for sure.
I feel like in a couple of months, prices are, a building is going to go up. So these three hundred to four hundred thousand dollar homes, if you take that long, will become four hundred, five hundred thousand dollar homes possibly.
Six or seven thousand dollars of rent, young families have to pay when we rebuild the network.
Other, other comments from the council?
You discussed the possible amendment.
Yeah, so the, the plans you threw up there, just that one.
This is the, this is the rezoning as recommended by the planning commission. That would include rezoning the entire tract from RS twenty to RS five.
So back to the original thing, so our RS twenty, if this, if this stayed RS twenty and someone chose to develop it, it was, uh, as you said on Monday, I believe, a hundred and sixty homes. Is that correct?
Yeah, and those are raw calculations. I mean, it's difficult to just be very accurate with that unless it was surveyed out, right? But that's, that's a roundabout number, right?
RS five was around about three thirty-seven. Is RS ten something in the middle of that?
Yes, I would, you know, it's, it's to be safe to say so. It's, it's, it's a, it's the middle of that in density. Um, the RS five proposals that we have seen represented, you know, an average density of around nine thousand square feet per, per dwelling unit. Now, that's what's lost with protecting natural areas. I'm not trying to make that part of this conversation tonight because, uh, you know, until we have a plat approved, we've had one presented to the planning commission, but it's difficult, you know, until you know what the zone's going to be, how, you know, how do you move forward with it? But um, you know, that's correct. You do, it would be about half that.
And, and the plat would have to come back to the planning commission no matter what.
Yeah, obviously. I mean, any kind of development proposal has to be approved by the planning commission. This would be significant undertaking, taking, there's lots of public infrastructure proposed. Um, you know, it would be, it would definitely go back through, through multiple reviews.
I've got a couple extra things to say there. I mean, you know, we, we didn't talk about, uh, we talked about this Monday, right? Um, you know, options for zoning, um, you know, we, you know, whether or not, and I've heard this from several people like RS, what we heard at planning committee was RS um, twenty is what it is, RS fifteen would be better, RS ten would be better, but not RS five. And um, you know, and, and in these considerations, you know, looking at this, if this was RS ten, you wouldn't have, you know, you're, you're still going to have a lot of development on this lot. And the next developer might require RS ten, you know. I personally like, like a, like a planned residential development because you can work to create community space and you can try to work to create, facilitate things that not only benefit the people in the neighborhood, but possibly benefit, hopefully benefit the people in the area. Um, I, I think overall, what we're talking about is a pretty drastic change to Cookville's environment and, and the southern side of Cookville. Um, I, I don't, you know, and I may, I may not be here for three months, but I think, I think in, in reality, you know, I would plan on seeing, you know, looking at this and then seeing that it might be developed in the future. And, you know, thinking ahead and saying, you know, if you wait too long, it might be multifamily. You know, if it sits for another twenty years, it, it very well could look like Murphysboro, depending on who's the next council and who's the next planning commission. And, and so that is a consideration. Um, you know, I really do think that, that planning this out and trying to work with a developer, I would love to see that work. I think we should address that and see what, what, what we can do as a planning commission to try to, try to make one of those work for this size development and, and set the bar for what we're looking for.
Well, I would uh throw out an amendment to, to look at this as, as a PRD. Is there a second?
Set a motion.
Yes, sir. Motion. Motion.
My question, we need a motion to discuss.
Hold on a second. Dan.
Big bird.
I made a motion to look at it as a PRD.
Right.
He seconded it.
Right.
Now, we need to vote. Can we have discussion first?
Yeah, you have a discussion on the amendment.
Okay, on the amendment.
You need to, if, if this passes, basically it goes back to the planning commission. It can't come back for second reading because it's a, it's a substantial, it's too big of a change.
You're not approving a rezon of a PRD. You can't because.
No, I know. It's not been considered PRD.
So you're basically.
Asking for it to be looked at as PRD. But does that require, let me ask something. I know we've got a motion second, but before we, so does that require the developer then to do what?
First, if you, if you make a mo, if you, if you deny this rezoning, it can't come back in its present form for you, okay? You make a motion to delay this entirely and, and, and have a PRD consider. Then that basically just, I'm not going to say tables it, but postpone it and you'll still have to come back to the first reading.
Well, I understand, but it, then it would require the developer to refile for PRD?
Well, you know, you have to, you have to, to make him refile for PRD, you've got to vote against this, kill this one tonight. And he's got to start over. You're sending him a signal that you'll consider a PRD.
That wasn't my motion. So that's what I'm trying to ask to make sure that we do the proper motion.
Well, I was middle from being on the bank commission can't consider PRD. And PRD is based on the middle of the plan for them to review. But I mean, you have to deny and apply the, you know, the, the council would part of looking at PRD which still got fixed and then he can submit to the planning commission.
You can postpone action tonight with the suggestion he, see if a PR, if he's interested in doing a PRD. And if he is, then we got to, the council can act on that the next time. And if he says, I'm not doing a PRD, then you've got to come back and either approve this or approve something that's not so far different uh to move forward, like an RS ten or RS twenty or fifteen or something else like that. But you can't tonight require a PRD, which you suggested.
I'd like to make an amendment to your amendment that we postponed it before.
You have a second to his.
He's seconding it. I'll tell you what.
Okay. I, I want to post, I want to make a motion to postpone it for a period of time for this to uh go back to the planning commission without prejudicing the case. Does that make sense?
No.
Makes sense. I'm not sure if it can be.
So we, so yeah, so we, we have.
Here, you're the winner. No, I know.
We have the option to postpone vote tonight.
You can postpone any decision tonight with the suggestion that the PRD be explored and report back to the council. Slow move. Well, okay. If we can't, what we need to do is Ricky needs to withdraw his vote.
Well, okay.
You need to withdraw your second. You make that motion and get seconded, then that can go forward. But right now we got too many balls in the air.
Okay. All right. I'll withdraw my uh motion for the PRD.
And I will draw my second.
Now make your move. What you said. All right. To, to postpone this.
Postpone this.
What you said. Have it, have them consult with the developer about pursuing a PRD. And then this will come back uh on the agenda. It can come back on the agenda whenever it wants to be put on the agenda. There's no doubt. That's my motion. No, that's the second.
My question was, is the developer willing to do this? You found that out. You want to give him time. Is he at R six considering going back and submit for PRD? It's off, then he's going to. I'm sure that's.
Yeah.
Something, Frank, bro.
He probably needs time to think about it. I don't know. I mean, certainly welcome to address it if he wants to, but he certainly doesn't have to. That would be.
But as of right now, there has to be a second to Dr. Womack's motion before it can be considered and discussed.
I'll second the motion to discuss. So my question is with postponing, we would not have, we would not have another reading, correct? This, this reading would be.
When it comes back, it's first reading again, but you don't have to have another public hearing.
And that's, excuse me, I'm sorry. Yeah. And so there wouldn't be.
You don't have to have another public hearing.
But it started with the first reading and then have to have a second reading. Okay.
So you still.
Yeah. But if it, you're talking about when it came back, it's what?
If it come, if it, if he, if he, if he come be or whatever the developer is, decides he doesn't want to pursue a PRD and the council puts it back on the agenda, then it comes back as a first reading because you don't have another public hearing.
As the original RS five.
As RS five.
But if it is a PRD, then that would be a new public hearing, considering the PRD.
Yeah, but if he says, I will do a PRD, then it needs to come back to the council. And you deny the RS five, with the idea he's moving forward with the PRD. And whenever that plan gets developed, go through the planning commission and comes back to the council as the PRD. But or when it comes back, when it comes back, it's a PRD, doesn't, doesn't get tracked. Then comes back to the council for reading and then you can do any of the buffers for the RS ten or RS fifteen, however you want to manage them. Yeah. Come back with the clean, so you come back with all, all those other options open.
And I'm sorry, if you can do that, if the developer does not want to do the PRD or if we don't vote on, or the PRD.
If the, right now, the motion would be to postpone tonight.
Yeah, that's it.
Tell the developer, see if he wants to pursue a PRD. And if he tells God that he doesn't want to pursue a PRD, then it comes, they can be put back on the agenda. And at that point in time, your options, your same options are still open. Uh, either approve RS five, change it to RS ten, put an RS twenty buffer around the lots that are already there and put RS five or RS ten in the middle, whatever you, whatever you, your options are all open as far as the rezoning is concerned.
But at the end of the day, this property is still going to be up for rezoning to develop, correct?
Oh, yeah. Well, it just comes back through the first reading, just like this tonight, no public hearing. And just like tonight, you could say, well, Mr. Comby stood up and said, I'm not doing a PRD no matter what you do to me. Then you could rezone it to RS twenty with a buffer, RS five, RS ten, RS fifteen, however you wanted to do it. But it comes back in the same, all your options still open two weeks from now or four weeks from now, have a special call meeting then.
Yeah, we need to give a date because the, they need to know when it's going to be discussed.
Oh, can I? Motion a second now. And if that passes, then you can vote on it today. Make a motion to set, set a date.
Again, my concern is even if we do a PRD, at the end of the day, it's still going to be developed. And from what I'm hearing, that what we need from, from, for our housing shortage is not RS twenty. We need more density. That, that's what the planning commission said. That's what other people, you know. I, I'm, I'm not a planner, so that's why I rely on experts and people who have told us what the housing needs are. And they have said we need more density. So that's my big, that's my problem with the PRD is that it's still, it's still going to be developed. And most likely, I mean, e- even if we stipulate an RS twenty PRD, what, what, where's, you know, where, where's the compromise? And what's going to be?
RS twenty PRD. We can do RS twenty right now without any restrictions.
Exactly, exactly, without any restrictions. So he could go put trailers on, I mean, okay. But I mean, that's, I'm trying to figure out what's protected. Like, how can we, how can we protect this the best way? Because it's going to be developed.
Motion right now is to post, is to postpone. That's, that's what's presently for the council. If you're raising these issues, sooner or later, we're going to have to make this decision, is what you're saying.
Yeah, I guess that's where my, with the postponing, I'm just.
I, I do have one question in regards to postponement. If the developer does choose to seek planned residential development, would he have to resubmit from the beginning of the plan first? Yes.
Absolutely, yeah.
And then, uh, with the, with same requirements of, of notice for so many days and all that.
And it would be a new application.
It would be brand new and then you'd have, have another public, when the plan was submitted, it would be much more detailed than it is now. Now, just have a crack the land RS five with a blank slate. If it came back as a PRD, it would be detailed. You'd be voting on that detail rather than like slate. But you still have to have a public hearing on that detail. Start all over.
And for the council's benefit, we, we've had a plat submitted, right? I mean, but it was submitted timely for study to the planning commission for Monday night's planning commission meeting. Uh, you know, I was uh transparent with the developers that I was happy to run concurrent pass based on how things uh were considered and approved. And if it was approved, it can move forward. And if it was denied, it would be moot point. Uh, but we, we have a subdivision plat. It's not binding, right? I mean, it's, it, you could still change, uh, but we do have a plan submitted um for consideration.
But now they can't vote on that.
They cannot. It's a planning commission issue. It's not a council issue. And I'm not trying to make it party to the request because it's, you know, it's still not, you know, it's, it's, there's unknowns, obviously.
Which my, my concern about postponing it is if we postpone it tomorrow, they could go in and put modular double wide homes in there and put a septic.
You could put septic tanks. Yeah, I mean, there's no zoning regulation for, zoning does not control double wide mobile homes. I mean, it's, it's exempt from that in state law. State law says you can do that anywhere that you can put a home in the city of Cookville, right?
Multiple home, I think, really quick.
Yes, I mean, it's, it's, either way, those are, those are protected.
RS twenty.
Yes, it just requires a septic tank. Sewer is the driver for all this. I mean, everybody understands that, right? Uh, if the property is for sale, you know, I mean, there's a chance it will be developed, right? I mean, that is, you know, sewer is a driver for density. Sewer extensions would allow higher density development. I mean, you guys heard what my presentation consisted of. Uh, you know, we just, this is a, a very small percentage of what we, you know, our housing choices in our market. Um, and that's why I think the planning commission moved forward with the request at that time.
I, I don't mind the idea that it's postponed long. I do have another question now. If it's postponed and the developer wanted to withdraw to expedite an application, is that, would that be considered? Or does it have to, you know, if he withdraw his, can he, can, can you withdraw an application at this point?
Yeah.
And so that could allow him to expedite forward, before we ta, if we tabled this for however long, that would end the table.
We're not going to table.
Formal sign, no rights statement, he withdraws his application for RS5. Yeah, I did.
It's realistic. There's no reason to do expedite it because he's got to go develop a plan. Now he's got to have a plan to review to be able to submit it, even consider a PRD. And that's, it's got to meet all the requirements of the PRD. So that's going to take. Donna, take a month at least to get some drama, wouldn't you think?
Based on they already have engineering to some point, right? They've done a design to some point. If that's what they were willing to submit, that's what the developer is willing to submit. Uh, I know Justin's in the room. I don't know if it's inappropriate to ask the developer these questions. I mean, we're like,
Justin, would you like?
Not sitting in our, in our audience tonight.
Mr. Mayor, I mean, I, it's just a lot to think about.
Okay. Fair enough. Understand.
I mean, it, it, it does pose timing issues and, it causes timeline issues and that's why I don't.
No worries. You don't, I wanted to offer you the opportunity, but understand totally.
Two weeks, two, two weeks to come back to the next city council meeting will give him time to think about it and decide that's what he wants to do. And it's not going to, that's not going to delay if that's what he wants to do, because it's going to take time to do that anyway. So I don't think.
So, so under this deal, just so everybody's clear, so if we, uh, if there's a motion second to postpone, if we vote on that and that passes, then we need to establish the time, which would be in two weeks that we would.
If that passes, then I think Dr. Wallmac could make a motion to schedule it at a specific time that we're, this, this postponed to that specific time.
And then what will be the action required at that meeting?
If he, if he withdraws the RS5, declares he's going to do a PRD, then, um, there's no action.
I understand.
If, if he says, no, I want to go forward with the RS5.
Correct.
Then it's exactly like it's before today.
It's here today.
You can approve RS5, you can approve RS10, you can approve the buffers that have been mentioned and things of that nature. So you're sitting the same posture you're in right now.
Everybody understands what that timing of that does. So we should deal with it in two weeks for sure, uh, in my opinion. We should look at it. I, I, in my opinion, we should deal with it in two weeks at the, at the next appointed council meeting. So we'll make a motion to that in a minute. So we, right now we postponed for two weeks.
And at that time we can come back and if there are, we decide not doing a PRD or we decide an amendment like the buffer or the transitional zoning, stuff like that, that can be.
What gives, it gives Mr. Cumbey time to decide if he wants to do a PRD. If he doesn't, then in two weeks, we're going to consider right where we are before we made any amendments, which is the RS5 to consider and or anything related to that, whether you want a buffer around it or whatever that is, that doesn't require it to go back to the planning commission.
Doesn't require another public hearing.
Another public hearing. So that, that's where we're at. So in two weeks, we're going to be either in the exact same spot or we're going to be looking at then proceeding toward a PRD to send it back to the planning commission. If I understand.
Yeah, I'm just, so the only goal of postponing is to discuss a PRD? Should we discuss? Yeah, yeah.
To get, to get Justin, Mr. Cumbey enough time to decide it because he, he needs to evaluate his plans to see if that's workable. If it's not, if it is, then I guess he, he, he could come back and have something.
But if we do, if we do it amended, that does not have to go back to the planning commission. We could, so.
Correct.
Should we discuss that? Should we not discuss that now? Or should that?
Right. It was, you were talking about transitional zoning and then it changed from transitional zoning to PRD.
I was talking about all kinds of options, what that looked like. Yeah.
Right now the motion.
It's just a postpone. I guess, and I'm just trying to establish the goal of postponing is just to postpone. And, and that's why I didn't know if we need to go ahead and discuss, all, discuss all the options and then decide to postpone because is there another option that the council willing to consider besides just a PRD? If we haven't discussed any of the options, we've talked a little bit about transitional zoning. But.
As I presented, we provided, uh, two options. You know, obviously that could have even, that's not all, it's not the only options. You guys have the ultimate decision in what options would be appropriate. The options we considered were to buff, were to transition, um, around the development as RS20, are to transition as RS10. Well, that's two options that we had prepared. And that was based on the comments that I heard on Monday at work session. Right? So that's, those are two.
Another work session to discuss this. And, uh, but you can't vote on what you're talking about. That's what everybody's thought about sets, I guess, if they want to, couldn't vote on that. This motion.
Oh, with that motion pending, no. If we postpone, we cannot discuss any further. We postponed that entire, yeah.
The motion and a second to postpone. Any further discussion? So we need to vote on the motion to postpone. So for two, oh, we'll come back to that. So motion, uh, to, to postpone. Any other comments?
Do we need to add a recommendation to that?
Well.
To evaluate PRD.
No, we're, we're postponing. Does that have to be, that don't have, the PRD doesn't have to be part of the motion, does it? No.
I think it's been communicated.
I think it's communicated.
I think everybody's communicated. All right. So, uh, uh, vote on postponing.
All votes correct. Three yes, motion carries.
So this will be a motion to look at this next council meeting, which would be, uh.
We need a motion to that effect.
I just said that, yeah, I was saying that, make a motion for us to consider this at the next council meeting, uh, which is May the, what, uh, what is it? May the fifth, seventh?
May 5th.
May 5th. So motion, motion second to consider this on May 5th. Any discussion or comments from the council on that? Okay. All vote.
All votes correct. Five yes, motion carries.
So this will be, so everyone here knows it will be considered at May 5th and in some capacity, you heard, maybe you understood all that. I'm not sure I even did, but, uh, we will look at that, uh, at what that will look like. It'll come back. It'll either be a discussion about sending it back to the planning commission for PRD, or it will be the original motion, which is RS5. And are there any options beyond RS5 with buffers, uh, straight RS10, whatever that looks like? Those would be the things that would be considered on that date and then voted on at that date.
No public hearing, correct?
Correct. No public hearing. Well, that concludes our agenda portion of the meeting, uh, longest meeting in history. That's any comments from the county? Yes, for sure. It's the longest meeting ever. Yes, Councilman Miller.
This is a total different subject. We had a big time to be philanthropist, um, just passed away, I believe, and I just come to the town, a lot of good things for the city of Cookeville. I just wanted to recommend.
Yeah. Well, thank everyone for coming out tonight. And it's always encouraging to see people getting involved in city government. So thank you for coming out tonight.
All right. We're adjourned.